Welcome, everybody, to the Tuesday, September eighth, twenty twenty. Meeting of the Committee of the Whole. I'd like to call the meeting to order. And I would also like to acknowledge. I would like to acknowledge that we're on the unceded territory of the Zemesis people, and we thank them for that. And before we go to agenda approval, I would like to pass the forum to Mayor Stone for an exciting announcement.
Well, I I'm sure it may be online right now already, but we were trying to time the announcement for the hiring of our new CIO with with the other parties, including our staff to try and get the release up. But I'm just really excited to announce that we've hired Alison McCarrick as our new Chief Administrative Officer. And I'll let people look at the news release for all of the details, but I just wanted to highlight some of her career highlights as previously serving as the CIO for Port Hardy. And the reason is is because I think it highlights the excellent fit that Alison has with the community, and it doesn't speak to the passion that she seems to have for Lady Smith or her roots in Saltair, which obviously make this very close to home for her. But I just wanted to highlight a couple of things that that were a little uncanny when you looked at the work that Lady Smith has done in her work in Port Hardy. One of them was constructing a new water reservoir to increase storage capacity and subsequent upgrades to overall water supply system, one of our strategic priorities, I know. Completing an updated service agreement and creation of a new relationship agreement with the, I'm going to get this wrong, but I'm going to try. Quack till First Nation. Carrying out major capital infrastructure repair for community pier and float system. Developing a feasibility study in collaboration with the First Nation for a boatyard haulout project. Ongoing review of the District of Port Hardy OCP. And increasing tourism services through advertising and branding with municipal and regional district tax revenues. And the reason I wanted to read those out as the highlights for this was when you look at our strategic plan or the work we've done in previous years, and hopefully the the work that's on the horizon for us. It really speaks to a similarity of of skill sets and intention in her work that really is a great fit for Lady Smith. And I think what people will discover as we get an opportunity to work with her and she becomes more visible in the community is that that level of passion and interest. And, you know, I I won't disclose anything that she might want to share with the community when she arrives on, I believe it's October fifth. So just less than a month away. I can see our acting CIO with a big grin because it's getting into budget season. But it's just that sort of fit. And I think that when when you go through these processes, we had such a high number of qualified candidates that it's about the fit, the personality, that passion for what it is that Lady Smith is all about. And I think she really shares that. And so I I I just wanted to to share that with the community before we go on with our meeting tonight. News release should be up on on the town of Lady Smith's Facebook and website and other social media shortly, if it's not already. And we look forward to working with Alison to help deliver on our strategic priorities. And as she says, to continue being that safe, caring and vibrant community that that Lady Smith is and that we all want to continue to improve on. So yay, welcome, Alison. We look forward to having you here. And and we can't wait to get to work. And I know that Ms. Anderson can't wait to just have one job as we head into budget season. So congratulations to Alison and thank you to all of council. Everybody who contributed to the process because I think that we got a really excellent hire that's a great fit for our account. That's it.
Thanks, Mayor Stone. And yeah, I'm I'm very excited myself. And just want to say that the pool of talent that Alison swam out of speaks volumes on how because there was a lot of qualified candidates. So town lady Smith can pat herself on the back that we must have a pretty good reputation out there because, boy, the candidates were 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 quite impressive. So for her to come out on top, that's that's awesome. It's exciting. So. Thank you for all that. And and Aaron Anderson, I'm sure we're going to do a much bigger thank you as it gets closer. But thanks. You've been a you've been a champ. So, all right. So I would like to ask that the agenda for the Committee of the Whole meeting be approved. Sorry, Counselor Johnson.
I'd like to add an item to the agenda.
What is that?
I'd like to have a discussion on what we can do to aid our businesses now that the fall is coming and anything that we can do to help the survival of especially the restaurants.
I I I mean, I'll talk with Aaron Anderson over there, but I'm we've kind of been dealing with this all along. So I'm not so sure it's should be added to this committee, but I'll ask staff's opinion on this.
Well, maybe. It's just that an opportunity to do some brainstorming and come up with some new ideas that we haven't discussed before as a group.
Oh, sorry. 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 I did ask Ms. Anderson first.
I was just saying, staff can talk directly with Counselor Johnson, and maybe we can put our heads together. And then at the next committee meeting, we could have a little bit more of a robust discussion that has some background information in it. Would that work, Council Lieutenant or Chair Lieutenant?
I I I would prefer that because we've got a pretty full agenda already. And I think we've been working towards this. But I saw a couple other hands up there. I saw Mayor Stone.
All right. With all due respect, I think that if this is the issue that that was forwarded to me earlier today, staff is already working on that specific issue. And this is a Committee of the Whole meeting where we're supposed to, if we want to go through the terms of reference, deal with sort of emerging and strategic items. And we already have an excessively full agenda. The OCP discussion in itself could be more could be, if done properly, a number of hours. And I don't think it would be appropriate to add to our already heavy agenda a brainstorming session when we have substantial business already on the agenda, especially if this regards to any kind of building bylaws or regulations that Committee of the Whole has no power to change. And neither does council without a proper and legislated approval process. And that's done at council, not a committee of the whole.
Counselor Patterson.
There we go. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Stuff like this, I would like to be given some heads up. You know, we we've got this agenda and been reading it and stuff, and now out of the blue comes something that we're supposed to be brainstorming on and and not have had a chance to even think about it for for this meeting. I really don't like being caught off guard with these types of of suggestions. So I haven't had a chance to mull this over. I see what we've been doing already, and I think it's amazing. And I and I know a lot of people are appreciating it. So if we're going to do this, I would like some heads up where I could have an opportunity to talk to some people, downtown merchants and stuff, not just caught out of the blue.
Thanks. You can use your executive, Counselor Johnson. I think you're kind of hearing what everyone's thinking here. We can probably, we can put this on the next Committee of the Whole meeting. I think it would probably be better. Yes.
The problem is the Committee of the Whole does not meet for another two months. And by that period of time, situations for the businesses downtown will be quite significant. It's a sixth of a year. And by the time we make any action, we could be easily into December. And there are concerns over various thoughts and items. How do we increase tourism? Do we keep the public washrooms open? A variety of things that we can be looking at, especially with the absence of the Festival of Lights. How do we stimulate tourism and aspects of? I think this is where we can have a general discussion, throw some ideas around. And then maybe come some ideas to ask staff to investigate for an upcoming council meeting. Because until December and the new year to help these businesses.
Counselor Johnson, I'm I'm not going to add it to the agenda. I think I think Ms. Anderson said that you can feel free to call staff and brainstorm with them on stuff. And I agree with Counselor Patterson. I don't like things unless it's super urgent. I don't like things thrown at the last second. So maybe we can add it to the next next agenda. If that's okay.
Well, I'm not happy, but I'll accept.
Right. So any other discussion on the agenda? So I move approval agenda. Opposed? Thank you. Moving on to the minutes of the Committee of the Whole meeting held July fourteenth, two thousand and twenty. The recommendation is that the minutes of the Committee of the Whole meeting held July fourteenth be approved. Moved by Mary Stone, seconded by Counselor Stevens. Any discussion? Just me, actually. I just had one thing on page. On page six, at the very bottom, the new business of the committee discuss holding information workshops periodically. And we said we're going to wait for the new CIO to be hired. These are these things that I think sometimes slip through the cracks. So could we put this on the next CIO agenda? And then even if we're not ready for it, at least it's still it's still there for us to discuss because I think it said that we it would be revisited once they're hired and in place. So I realize Alison might not be ready for it, but at least it'll still be kind of on our minds. Awesome. Thank you. Seeing another discussion. I move approval. All those in favor? Opposed? motion for you. Thank you. Moving on to number four reports. The official community plan review presentation report. So does recommend the recommendation is that the committee. One, recommend that council confirm a kickoff date of February two thousand and twenty one to commence community engagement for the new official community plan. Two, define the scope for the official community plan review. And three, recommend that council approve the scope of the official community plan review as defined by the Committee of the Whole. Is that a question, Mayor Stone, or are you moving it?
I question before I move a portion of it, and this would be through to staff. Obviously, there's a lot that goes into determining the scope of an OCP review. And I know my list even in notepad is is very long. So I know this is going to be a bit of a protracted discussion to make sure that we get all the provisions in there. And of course, we're going to need feedback from staff. So I guess my question before moving any further is to Mr. Bello Baba. If or through you, sir, to Mr. Bello Baba, if if we're able to and this may speak to Counselor Johnson's concern as well. If we're able to get start on a framework tonight, are we able to revisit this discussion again, say, in October? Because I know that we have a conversation, we'll put some pri- priorities and parameters together. But then over the next few weeks, when they receive feedback and stuff, and they want to broaden or narrow the scope, if it would be appropriate to add an additional community of the whole meeting in October dedicated to discussion around the scope of the OCP review. The reason I ask that is in preparing for this meeting, I fell in in had a bit of a crush on a couple of OCP examples, but I didn't get the opportunity, frankly, to read all of them. And I was actually tipped off to others that we may want to look at that I haven't even had a chance to take a peep at yet. So I just have this feeling that for whatever discussion we may have tonight, we may not be able to to capture everything, or there may be a few squirrels in there we want to eliminate as we move forward with the discussion. So I guess the question more pointedly is if we confirm the date tonight and then we have this discussion this evening, is there time to have another discussion in October? And maybe refine that scope before we need to go out for an RFP to bring in the team to assist us with the process?
Through the chair, yes, it's certainly possible to essentially what staff are seeking tonight from council is sort of a preliminary kickoff date and a and a modifiable scope that can occur. So it is certainly possible for council to set a second Committee of the Whole agenda meeting. And I would certainly recommend that if council wants to sort of scour different OCP processes for ideas and inspiration. And I'll speak to this in my presentation with the methodology staff are kind of proposing. There is also a should be ample opportunity throughout the process to actually adapt and design the process to public consultation as well. And I can speak to that in greater detail in my presentation.
Okay, thanks. I'll hold off any motions for now, but I'm comfortable with the date. And then I guess we'll see what kind of work we do in terms of the scope. Thanks.
Okay, Ms. Smith, would it be, if I think your brain, would it be easier that we just move number one? Now, just and then it's out of the way, and then we can do discussion, or should we?
Yeah, that's fine. If get that one out of the way because I think, see if everybody's in agreement with that timeline and then move on to the others.
Is that what you were thinking, Mayor Stone? Or would you prefer to wait for the report and see what happens?
Either way, you know, I'm comfortable with it. I don't know what the rest of council's opinion is. But I'm comfortable to to wait until we've seen the presentation before we move any motions. And then if if we can, you know, ask more pointed questions of staff about timing and dates and stuff like that after we've seen the presentation, I'm good either way.
Okay, okay. Why don't we let why don't we let Jake do his presentation and then we can have a discussion. Mr. Bello Baba.
Good evening. Apologies, I'm just working from one screen tonight, so it might be a bit difficult for me to see if any members of council or the committee have questions. But tonight I'll just do a quick presentation. We'll talk about OCPs generally, a quick review, as well as some discussion on a typical OCP process or planning process in general. Talk about a proposed approach till to February twenty twenty one. And then just sort of essentially open it up for council discussion on or a committee discussion on direction in terms of scope kickoff date and any other thoughts and ideas that the committee may wish to share. So the important thing, one of the most important things to remember about OCPs is they are a legislated document. That's why they're called an official community plan. So the Local Government Act mandates how they are adopted, their content and so on. This is perhaps the most important section of the Local Government Act when it comes to official community plans, particularly four seventy eight. And that is an official community plan does not necessarily off commit or authorize a municipality to do things. However, everything bylaws that are enacted, works that are undertaken must be consistent with the an official community plan. This is probably the most confusing, most confused legal aspect of an official community plan out there. Many people think that a municipality or is then obligated to achieve its goals when it states them in an official community plan, which is not necessarily the case. So essentially, the way the way to understand this clause is that a municipality adopting a official community plan can set goals. And if it is unsuccessful in those goals, it's not in contravention of the act. However, certain principles and policies in the official community plan cannot be contravened. So an example would be rezoning something that would be inconsistent with the official community plan. So the 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 message here is that you can set very lofty, ambitious goals without consequence if if you're unsuccessful in achieving them. However, the principles and policies of the OCP have to be adhered to. An official community plan has a great deal of mandatory and optional content. I won't go through the whole list here. But there is mandatory content on residential developments. Maps are mandatory for certain types of things. New one is the Housing Needs Report, which we're undertaking right now. Some other notable ones, greenhouse gas reduction targets. And then, of course, you have optional content related to social needs, maintenance and enhancement of farming, et cetera. And of course, all of this filters its way down. You can see the graphics on the right of all the sort of categories of policies and goals and objectives that may end up in an official community plan. So the scope is is can be potentially extremely large. Every almost every conceivable kind of category of policy goal or objective can be input into an official community plan. In terms of the processes, a quote from Jane Jacobs pretty much summarizes the number one rule of any type of planning process. And that is without consultation, the the process is largely ineffective. So essentially, an OCP is no exception to that. And in fact, there are mandatory consultation requirements. But if you remember this quote, you'll always be fine when it comes to public engagement. And that as long as people have the ability to influence the outcome of the process, you'll probably be okay and you'll really do quite well if you actually give people the opportunity to steer and and guide the process design. And I can talk about that in a little bit as well. Any planning process is usually broken down into a set of consistent steps. And if you're out perusing different OCP processes, you'll see sometimes they have five, sometimes they have seven. But generally, you know, these are the categories that I would I would write out for any planning process, including an OCP. You have a preparing phase, which we're currently in right now, where you're gathering information before you even sort of go out and speak to the public. Then you kind of had a broad visioning, goal setting process. Then after that, there's a lot of analysis and research that goes on to to achieve the goal, to see how to achieve the goals. Then you're kind of coming up with general ideas. Then you're doing a formal drafting process, then adoption by council, and then implementation. Each of these phases almost always has three elements with except except for maybe the first and last two. You have an engagement component. You have a deliverables component where you're actually producing something like a document or a draft of the plan. And then you have a series of tasks that need to be achieved during that phase. As I mentioned, we're obviously currently in a preparing phase. Since the adoption of the strategic plan, staff have been gathering data, documents that we know we're going to need, organizing things, acquiring everything from software to staff resources and so on. So all of that sort of behind the scenes work that's makes the planning processes a success. This step is often overlooked in terms of its importance. But really, it's one of the most important steps because you do, once the project gets rolling, you need things readily available and you need resources readily available to make sure the product, the momentum keeps going. So there's sort of different approaches, and you'll see this in the examples of the OCPs that I've provided. Sometimes you do just sort of a light housekeeping of your existing OCP. Sometimes you do a brand new comprehensive OCP, brand new vision for the community. And naturally, you know, the scope of the project dictates the amount of consultation required for it to be successful, the amount of time required for it to be successful, and the amount of money that will be spent, money and resources that will be spent to make it successful. And I think the most important thing to note in terms of the 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 different sort of scopes of OCP reviews is that the tendency is to migrate towards more comprehensive. And I don't necessarily mean that in a bad way. It's not like a physical infrastructure project where, you know, it starts delaying or costs starting increasing. It's a it's not it's almost always not a good thing. In this case, it can actually be a good thing if the scope is migrating because lots of people have ideas and those ideas need to be flushed out and investigated. And so sometimes that does tend to push the process to be longer or more expensive or more engagement or all of those things. But it isn't necessarily mean that the project is stagnating or that it's bad. It just means that, you know, as a creative process, sometimes it takes more work than expected. In terms of where a big question in terms of the strategic priority and the strategic plan is where we would place that strategic priority on this spectrum of scope. And that's a question, a discussion for council tonight is where it fits. And just like anything, think fast, inexpensive and comprehensive and picking too. You know, the the scale and scope really sort of dictates those type of things. So it's important to understand that, you know, the the more you want, the longer it'll take or the more it will cost. The faster you want it, then you may have to scale back on scope and so on. So just like any other type of project, any other type of purchase or resource, the rule still applies to to the planning process. So in terms of what staff are sort of tentatively proposing as an idea, strategic plan was adopted late twenty nineteen. I had planned on doing this presentation in March of this year. Got a little sidetracked with COVID. Definitely sort of changed a lot of things, the way things are happening in the town. So we've started a lot of prep work now. What we're hoping is that by late this year, we'll have completed all of our prep work, including appointing perhaps a steering committee and looking for a consultant and so on. And with a February twenty twenty one sort of start of the visioning phase of the process. And then what we're actually, what we'd like to propose is that we actually complete the visioning phase and produce a report on the visioning phase and then use the findings of that phase to design and implement subsequent phases based on the vision. So, you know, we'll learn from that process what the major interests are, what areas of study we should be looking at, how extensive perhaps consultation should be for subsequent phases. And so the idea would be is we could sort of start with a vision, lock that down, and then use that to design the process moving forward as well as to refine the scope as we go. The reason for doing this, we have a new CIO, we have a new Director of Development Services. So it gives us time to familiarize yourself with the community more. We also have a number of other high priority planning projects that are in the implement phases station phases. And this gives us a little bit of time to get those into a place that is a little more squared away. The Housing Needs Report, which is a mandatory consideration of an official community plan and currently a very significant topic in the community in the region is expected to be complete in January twenty twenty one. So that will give us quite a bit of guidance on that key topic area at that time. And we've seen a significantly high number of development applications. And sometimes we see that activity slow in the winter. So that frees up resources in the planning department to work on the OCP. A big consideration is COVID nineteen. We want to work through the pandemic with this. Other communities are doing it as well. But unfortunately, COVID, the reality of COVID nineteen is it does impact meaningful public engagement. There's really no way to soften that. But this approach gives us time to align with more warmer weather, which means we could do activities outside. Establishing the vision first and then refining the process is very efficient and responsive. If people have innovative ideas, we can then design the process moving forward to to research those ideas and adapt. The vision document also becomes somewhat standalone. When council, for example, is considering discretionary approvals, they can have that like a rezoning. Council can evaluate that based on the visioning document that's complete, whether they choose to support or not. They can look at that document and they can consider it, and that information is available to them to consider or not. Their council's choice. And then, most importantly, this gives us an opportunity to stop and start if necessary. So worst case scenario, if we go back into a significant lockdown or something like that, we'd have the vision document in place, and it's a good sort of holding position to be in to wait and, you know, sort of watch the storm from shore, if you will, in a in a good position. And then restart it once once things settle down and we get back to sort of normal. So this is the recommendation before the committee and happy to answer any questions and and hear counsel of the committee's discussion.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Bello Baba. Sorry, everyone, I can't see you guys. Maybe. I can't see who's who was there. There we go. There we go. All right, I will. I see Counselor Patterson's hand up. Counselor Patterson.
Okay, just first of all, can we all get a copy? Because I'm muted. Can we all get a copy of your PowerPoint? It was good, but as we went through it, I was trying to write down questions and stuff. What is project file? I think that was the third.
That's just a fancy Jakeism for a a file where you a file where you contain all of the information about the project. So all of your background information, all of your you know, data analytics and stuff like that. It's it's not, it seems like a minor thing, but it's actually quite important to the acts ease of access to information during a project like an O C P is critical because you could be in the midst of a public engagement session. Someone asks a question about a particular thing and you need to be able to find it quickly. So a lot of work is actually spent filing. I know it's not very glamorous and exciting, but it 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 just is.
And in the the slide that had the local government, the the must dos for the O C P, and then there was the four or five with the green bar, the optional. Could could you put that up again?
Sure. That one there?
Yeah, now I gotta try and okay. Oh, thank you. Okay. Oh, it was okay. It was in a optional maintenance and enhancement of farming. Because we went through it so quick, I thought it was in one of the mandatories and trying to go, we don't have any. So how could we include it? Okay, thank you.
I'm just waiting for the screen again before I can see anybody with their hands up.
Maybe they all left.
Did everybody else here? Is there anybody else who wants to get on the question list? I can only see Council Johnson. So we'll go with Council Johnson. You're muted, Council Johnson.
Just need to get the presentation taken down.
There we go. Thank you. And then Mayor Stone, then Councilor Stevens. Council Johnson?
Yes, I'm wondering, you're talking about visioning process. To what extent do you see this visioning? Is it very detailed or what?
Through the chair, usually a visioning session is kind of like the big broader goals. So an easy way to think about it is that slide where you had mandatory and optional content. Think about big goals in those areas that people might come up with. So policies, ideas on greenhouse gas emissions, maybe as part of the visioning session. People come up with a target for greenhouse gas emission reduction or measures to do that. So it's kind of intended of where do we want to be in 40 years? Sometimes they use methods like referred to as like backcasting. So they'll say in 2040, the town of Lady Smith is X or Y. And so statements are sort of put together that give guidance for subsequent work on the O C P. So you start sort of broad and then work down into more detail as you head towards writing a draft of the O C P.
Follow up, Council Johnson?
Okay.
Council Johnson, the last two. I'll have to come back to Council Johnson. Are you there? No, we'll we'll get back to Council Johnson. I'll move on to Mayor Stone.
Thanks. My list is long, so I'll try and enter into a couple of things based on the presentation first. One was, you know, that scope is obviously a critical piece in the whole process. And I'm wondering if staff has based on the review of our existing documents and the, you know, relatively aged nature of the existing O C P, but understanding that there's been significant amendments to it through local area plans that frankly probably need a little bit of improvement and review as well. Where does staff anticipate sort of the sweet spot? I had it kind of between a full rewrite and fully comprehensive. Being that we haven't had that look for almost two decades. But I was just wondering what staff's, you know, keeping in mind what we've anticipated budget wise and stuff too, right?
Through the chair, I I would agree that it would probably fit within that area, given that the O C P is almost 20 years old. I would also say that one could argue that it might even be irrelevant what council and staff feel the scope should be. Because the community may feel the scope may fit towards that more comprehensive end. In which case there would be quite a bit of drive from the community for a more comprehensive review. So my my gut is telling me that that it will probably find itself that it is probably best to assume that it would be a larger scope. Just because of the the nature. Even if another way to put it is even if you looked at only mandatory content, quite of that, quite a lot of that has changed since the O C P was the the existing O C P was adopted. And so we actually have new topic areas like a housing needs report that we have to address. That's a lot of work. So yeah, I would certainly say that most of the clues are pointing towards a more comprehensive review.
Okay. And can I have a follow up?
Yes.
So reflecting on that and then the scope of, you know, those sort of nice tabs, the the must haves and then the nice to have. Based on our strategic plan, our discussion around climate, environmental issues, I think some of the experience that I've seen even as my time as mayor of all best intentions not really being reflected in practice when it comes to protection of repairing areas, for example, or other concerns for the environment. That I would think that that would need to be included in the scope. So meaning things like, how does our community plan impact G H G actions, for example? How do we better protect repairing area regulations or repairing areas beyond maybe what the basics of regulations are? To make sure that when we are getting development in our O C P, that it is in line with best practices and the desires and of the community. And then by nature, again, looking at that optional section, that would lead to revision of the D P A guidelines and probably some revisions to the zoning bylaw as well. Hopefully not significant, but you know, we just had a conversation at our last council meeting or or was it two ago about an application for development that just didn't seem to fit with the spirit and intent of the existing zoning bylaw. And again, building on now our 12 year old sustainability vision as well. So the question based on that is, in those optional pieces, do you see those environmental pieces? You've already mentioned the the housing needs reports. So that speaks to some of the social challenges that we can address through the O C P around affordable housing and things like that. So would you see things like the environmental provisions and then flowing out of that amendments to the development permit areas and guidelines?
Through the chair, it's it's quite possible. There's often development permit guidelines have to course for practical reasons, really need to correspond to land use designations. So changes in land use designations, which are likely to occur because it's been 20 years, would then warrant changes. So it certainly is an area that probably should be looked at in many respects. The nice thing about development permit guidelines, I have to say, from a fairly technical point of view is that it's often, even if you want substantial changes in development permit policies, often you can recycle a lot of the guidelines you have, use them as a base. So a review in that area is not development permit guidelines are can actually be quite easy to to do. And and, you know, for example, the the wildfire D P guidelines in Whistler, I worked on those when I worked there. It was obviously difficult, but it was a completely new D P A area that we added as part of a essentially a sort of revisit of the existing O C P. So it it certainly is an area that is worth looking at. It does increase the scope and and create more work. It's not necessarily a massive amount of work though, compared to other areas where the where the process may go.
Thank you. I have a lot more, but I'll cede the the floor to those who miss.
We will come back to you. Okay, thank you. So Councilor Stevens, I've got you next, but can we just go back to Council Johnson? Because he had a follow up and he kind of technical difficulties. That's okay. Council Johnson, are you more clear now? Besides being muted?
Just carry on.
Okay, you can let me know if you want to be added to speaker list. All right, Council Stevens, we'll move on to you.
Thank you. My cat is not joining me this week, it doesn't seem so. Well, I spoke, maybe I spoke too soon. So just general comments on on what we've gone over so far. I my sense, looking at the the graphics in the presentation that we're somewhere north of a rewrite too. And looking at our existing O C P and then the appendices and the local area plans that have gone into it. I I sort of was sensing that there's little tweaks here and then major parts there. And it will all add up to something close to a rewrite, I I would think. There's lots of of questions I have. I'm going to hold off on a good number of them because I think we're going to have another meeting to to cover them. But the area I'm most interested in is around consultation and in two aspects. Consultation in a time of COVID, and I I don't want to put anyone on the spot, but if there've been sort of thoughts about that or other jurisdictions that have had done a good job or a poor job of of that. And then also something I really want to, I'll be coming back to, I know again and again and again, that not only are we doing very fulsome consultations, but also that it's highly highly advertised that we've done these consultations. I, you know, it's happened a few times that that planning processes have been really thorough, attended by hundreds. And then there's after the fact, a sort of Johnny come lately contingent that says, I wasn't asked. And you can provide all the documentation after the fact saying you just didn't show up. But I I'd really like to stress that throughout the process in terms of promotion and advertising. But if you could speak maybe to how much consultation you think you you will need to to do in this and what types of unique methods given COVID that we might consider?
Yeah, certainly. We have given this a lot of thought. I've talked to other municipalities where they have O C Ps underway during the pandemic. So I think the, as a general rule, an important thing to stress is that we can use electronic methods to some degree. But we can't rule out in person consultation. It it's simply if you imagine trying to have a conversation with someone and not being physically present with them, you miss things like body language, you miss you can't sketch things out on a piece of paper together. So we will have to find ways. There's are certainly ways we can do that in terms of and still meet physical distancing guidelines. So we, part of a February kickoff date and part of our prep time now is to figure out how we might have meaningful consultation with 100 people, assuming the 50 person limit changes. In, you know, during if the pandemic pandemic remains. So we are certainly looking at those different ways. There's different ways you can do it. You can do more one on one type consultation to keep numbers down. As I mentioned, you can do things outside. So you can have, you can be in outdoor venues. We don't have to be inside all the time. Warm weather is a great opportunity to be outside. You can do participatory consultation. So when I was with the city of Penn Ticton, we did an alternative transportation scavenger hunt. So people were given a list of things and then asked to go find things in the downtown using non vehicle, non personal motor vehicle transportation. So they're doing that individually and then they're coming back and they're reporting. So you can do things like that where people are actively engaged, but they're not necessarily in large groups or close together or things like that. So this would be where we'd probably work with our visioning consultant and our various consultants and staff and members of the community to figure out what works best to to achieve that. So certainly we can, we can do that. I can also speak to the other sort of question there about advertising, the amount of consultation that occurs. If you look at most of the examples of O C Ps that have been completed recently, there's usually an entire section about how the O C P came about where it's detailed how consultation occurred. And that's becoming more and more common. So the document itself makes it clear how much and what type of consultation occurred and how extensive it was. So that would be one method and probably the most important method so that it's kind of always remembered how how it came about.
Okay, thank you.
Follow up, Council Stevens?
No, I'm good for now. Thank you.
Again, it looks like I'm back to you, Mayor Stone.
So Jake, just a question. So I have a long list of nice to haves, right? And I'm sure we all do to a certain degree. But is that what we do now or is that captured in the visioning process? Like when we're talking about scope, are you just wanting to to get a sense from council about if we're looking at a rewrite or a concert, you know, where we are in the scale as well as some of those sort of optional items. And then as we go through the visioning, we can all enter into from my list includes things like active transportation planning or G H G targets and monitoring provisions for things like better provisions around stormwater or E V charging in new homes and developments, that kind of thing. Like, how deep do we go now? Or is that part of the vision?
Through the chair, I I think it's the visioning process will will largely flush that out. And what often happens is the decision making body, in this case, council would likely see that a lot of those good ideas, the thing about good ideas is that because they're good and people are smart, that you will find in the visioning process that most people will have very similar ideas and that gets flushed out in the visioning process. What you'll also find is that people will have ideas that were not anticipated and it changes the you know, good ideas that were not anticipated. And it changes the direction of the process to a degree, or it gives an avenue of investigation. So it's not necessarily necessary for council at this point to start listing off topic areas. But if the plan is to have a second committee of the whole meeting later in the fall, that's actually a good opportunity for council to take some time, look at the, look at the O C P examples that have been provided and find some of their own. And at that second committee of the whole meeting, produce a list of of just general topic areas that are important to council that staff can then build into that visioning phase, you know, G H Gs has been mentioned. So we know by law, we have to consider that. But if there's a particular aspect of G H G reduction that council is interested in in focusing on, why not specify it at the next committee of the whole meeting? And then we can sort of factor that into the into the process. I think for tonight, probably the most important process is that general scope on that continuum, because we need that to understand what to propose for budgeting, what to look for from consultants and those types of things. So it helps us sort of make that jump in into where we're going.
Thank you. Can I have just one quick follow up?
Yes.
So without going then into the examples or anything, and you did already mention things like wildfire interface development permit areas, for example, we can dive into that subsequently without. You know, I I know that if I start listing off things, it's going to create a bunch of discussion and we could be here for a while. And I know we still have a fairly lengthy agenda. So I'll save my sort of hot list, if you will, for for the other one. But would it be also helpful tonight to determine that sort of steering committee size and composition? Or or just at least the size? Like, just having been through the waterfront area planning process, I found one of the most valuable things was the the, what was called the Shiret Committee or the group that did the design Shiret. And that really was the genesis of bringing all these different groups together, people from Staminus as well to help develop that plan. So I know even that conversation might be a separate agenda item in terms of the composition, how many, you know, random community members or different organizations we may want to involve in that committee. But do you, do you have a sense for the committee size and what you would suggest? I was kind of thinking more than 10, but that might be onerous. But I think you need that broad representation in something so important as an OCP.
Through the chair, yes, it's something we're working on right now is what some planners dub a stakeholder map. So what we do is essentially have an Excel file or a chart of some sort, table of some sort. And we list different stakeholder groups and who that represented, who might well represent that stakeholder group. You know, everything from heritage to environment to housing to social justice, et cetera. And then what we'll do with that is we'll compile a recommended steering committee and we'll bring that forward for council's approval. And council will have the opportunity to add stakeholder representation or or consolidate stakeholder representation as they see fit. And then there would be an advertising and selection process where those positions would be appointed. I would agree that a that a larger committee is necessary, just given the scope of the OCP. Sometimes you can get lucky and sometimes a stakeholder representative can actually represent two different groups or two different sort of stakeholder groups. So you can kind of condense things that way. But generally speaking, a stakeholder steering committee for an OCP would be larger. You know, it would be larger. It also needs to be diverse. And then it also needs to be relatively, how do you say it, sort of equal representation? So you you don't want to create create an imbalance or or an unequal footing. So staff would sort of look at that stakeholder map and and come forward for appointment by council. Again, just to keep the process sort of creative, council can certainly specify at any point at this meeting or the next committee of the whole meeting, stakeholders they absolutely want to see represented represented. We, chances are, they're already on the list. I've started, you know, First Nations, a great example, housing organization's a great example. We've already sort of written that, put them into the list. But if council is thinking of a particular group that might get overlooked, by all means specify now because we don't want to miss them.
Thank you.
Okay, yeah, committee, I've got Counselor Patterson, Counselor Johnson and Counselor Mackay. I'm also just being very aware of the time. We're an hour deep and we've also got some, I think, some other lengthy discussions on this committee as well. And as we discuss this, I'm thinking that the idea of having another council committee, sorry, committee, the whole meeting in October is probably going to be needed, not just a good idea. So just please keep that in mind that we do have some time. So time constraint. So Counselor Patterson, I'll go with you first.
Uh, thank you. Just one quick one. For an item to be included on the OCP and I'm and I'm going to pick one, which I think you probably think that I would be bringing up anyways, is tree protection. And and in that optional category, I think it said something like nat- natural preservation, environment, something other than. Do we need to have an existing bylaw or an existing policy? Or is that something that's that is developed through the OCP process?
Through the chair, no. The OCP is the is the umbrella planning document. So it's not uncommon for an OCP. And and some people don't like how this works sometimes, but it's not uncommon for a plan to plan. So the way to explain that is you may have an OCP policy that says the town will investigate a tree protection by law by such and such date. And so it can actually, the OCP can actually direct further planning work in much the same way that a strategic plan works where direction is set and then that plan then then endeavors to undertake that. Another approach is that the OCP could direct sort of the bringing forth of such a bylaw by a certain date. And then Mayor Stone mentioned, for example, zoning bylaw amendments. So what often happens is the OCP is adopted and then a couple months later or throughout the year following its adoption, consequential amendments and bylaws are brought forward to achieve the objectives of the OCP. So there might be zoning amendments, there might be a tree protection bylaw, there could be bylaws on other things, you know, fish habitat and things like that. So you would adopt the OCP. And if the goal of the OCP is for other bylaws to be brought forward, whether they be amending or new, they can be brought forward later to achieve the goals of the OCP.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Mackay and then Counselor Johnson.
Thank you. First of all, I appreciate Mayor Stone's comments with regard to the consultation and the steering committee or like a public group that would be guiding a lot of the conversations and that sort of thing. I think it's really important. I think it's worthy of a big discussion on on the makeup of that. Like you said, to make sure all the all the stakeholders are included in the in that conversation. The other piece was, I wondered, thinking on the the way ways of making sure we maximize on getting people involved and aware and and having their say. Is there is there a process whereby the areas of discussion are divided up? Or or do consultations typically, are they all encompassing? Or would you perhaps have a conversation around environmental concerns or and then another one around more around sort of the development and housing kind of thing? Are they always comprehensive in their approach? Or do they divide up into sort of areas of interest for people to get involved in?
Through the chair, there's no hard and fast rule. I would say generally speaking, in the early stages, the visioning phases, conversations are more broad and therefore they often include everybody. But they do sometimes have breakout sessions, so you can kind of pick a table if you're really keen on tree protection or wildfire protection or land use. So they do often have breakout sessions where they kind of talk generally. As you get towards the drafting phase of the OCP, often the conversations are more targeted and the conversations with stakeholders are more targeted. So for example, if you were to adopt new development permit guidelines, you might do a, you might do a direct engagement with the development group. You might do a direct engagement with an environmental group. You might do a direct engagement with the community planning and advisory committee to discuss how those guidelines affect each of those groups. And you might discuss with each of them individually to get different perspectives. Another key stakeholder that often people overlook is staff. So development permit guidelines, another good example. Usually what you'll do is you'll pick three planners, three more junior planners, one or two more junior planners. You'll actually have them run mock development scenarios with your new guidelines to make sure you they work. So that's another example of very, very targeted consultation where you actually pick a group to test the policies. So the easy way to think of it is just again on that, on that, that roadmap that I showed is in the visioning process, you're going to talk to sort of everybody together. You might do a few breakout sessions, but the conversation is broad and comprehensive. As you get closer to adoption, there would be very focused conversations with very focused groups as well as some broader conversations as well. But there would be a, you would realize right away that a certain policy should be discussed with a certain group and staff and consultants would make sure that those conversations happen.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate that.
Thanks, Counselor Mackay. Counselor Johnson? You're muted, Counselor Johnson.
One question, one observation. The observation regards to participation. And one of the ones that I found very interesting is that quite often Joe Public doesn't attend these meetings because they're semi intimidated. So they went to the local neighborhood meetings or like Baby Road, Davis Road area and so on, and dealt with the plan from that perspective and worked outward rather than starting big going inwards. But my question was in the visioning. Is there a presumption in the visiting that we're looking out 20 years when the population in the town will be 22,500 or whatever? What is in the visioning, is it set with a population base and expansion of the town? Is that pre-assumed?
Through the chair. One of the nice things about the strategic priority and the strategic plan is it kind of sets a 40 year horizon. So that's actually quite helpful because we understand that we we kind of want a long timeframe for the for the OCP. In terms of growth and and understanding that, mandatory content of an OCP is essentially, there is a requirement for growth projections. So one of the key things we have to do, and this is actually happening right now with the Housing Needs Report, is we are actually doing population projections, assembling population projections to determine how much Lady Smith is likely to grow during the time, you know, the timeframe of the OCP. So a very key component that occurs in conjunction with the visioning and and is hopefully the information is available when the visioning occurs is actually a sort of growth projection for the community that helps inform that process and informs later stages.
Follow up, Counselor Johnson?
Follow up. In regards to the population growth, people who are relatively new to the community versus people who've been here for 50 years or over, quite often are in conflict. How do you look at this question of the makeup of the views of the community, how they've grown and changed with them being involved? For example, you have somebody like Jeff here who was born and raised in Lady Smith and somebody who's been here for six months.
Yeah, through the chair. I think that's part of a good stakeholder mapping and and understanding process. So you definitely want to recognize the diversity that's in the community. And the the sort of relative population size of any particular stakeholder group is not necessarily a guiding factor in your consultation. There could be only, you know, 20 of a particular category, demographic or psychographic category of person in the community and you'd still want to reach out to that group and hear their viewpoints. So part of that is understanding, you know, that it isn't one size fits all for engagement in consultation. So a great example is we have several large industrial facilities in the community and people work shift work and they may work late. They may, you know, be sleeping during the day and working at night. And so you would actually design your engagement to make sure you didn't exclude those people. The same goes for people who are younger, people who are retired, people who have recently arrived, people who have been here forever. You would essentially sort of design your consultation in that regard to make sure that none of those groups are excluded. And this is again where that visioning process actually can help inform that. Because you may hear during that process, well, have you talked to this group? Or did you know that this, you know, this particular stakeholder group exists in the community and be like, oh, okay. That's interesting. And so you would actually go out and and in later phases of the project, make an effort to try to contact them and engage with them directly. So it, there isn't really, yeah, there's sort of a process of just making sure that no one's excluded and that every everybody's voice is is heard.
You used the term psychographic. I don't understand that term.
A psychographic is essentially a state of mind, whereas a demographic would be a state of being. So a demographic would be my age. That's a demographic. I like tacos. That's a psychographic.
Thanks, Counselor Johnson. I've got Mayor Stone next on the list.
Make sure we get those taco people, Jeff. If you like Mexican. Well, I do have a motion. I don't think it's it's anything other than a commitment to to the two things that I think that that we recognize is obviously the date for the kickoff as is in the recommendation and also the that the scope and then that a special meeting be held in October. If council's okay with a motion, I would put a motion forward now. And then we can still have further discussion, but I think that would get us, you know, moving on in our minds, at least to the next step. I don't see anybody trying to like shake their heads at me, so I'll make the motion. That'd be recommended to council that it be confirmed that a kickoff date of February 2021. That, oh, sorry, I missed my own notes here. Number one, that it be, that a kickoff date of February 2021 be confirmed for the to commence community engagement for the new official community plan. Number two, the scope for the official community plan review be comprehensive slash new. And number three, that a special committee of the whole meeting be scheduled for October dedicated to discussing the official community plan process for 2021. And I would move those three items.
Motion has been moved. Do I have a second or Counselor Stevens? Any questions? Discussion? Counselor Patterson?
Where does that leave the bullet out? Bullet number three on the staff recommendation that council approved, the scope of the official community plan review as defined by the committee of the whole.
That was number two, which said that the scope for the official community plan review be comprehensive slash new.
Well, let's define the scope of the official community plan review.
So I, that that encompasses two and three duck. I just worded it in a way that move the recommend that council to before I made the numbered motions. Unless Jake, unless Mr. Bello Baba intended that to mean something else.
Through the chair, no, I I think the recommendation is this, in terms of scope, is exactly what staff were looking for is somewhere along that continuum.
All right, seeing no more questions, I'll call this question. All those in favor? Opposed? Same note, motion carries. Thanks, Mayor Stone, and thanks for that conversation, you guys. I think it shows how big and robust this is going to be. So that's great.
We're all crazy enough to be excited about it.
I can see Mars just grinning. All right, so we're moving on to 4.2. Proposed changes to filming regulations. So staff's recommendation is that the committee direct staff to refer proposed Town of Lady Smith film bylaw 2020, number 2045, to the Lady Smith Chamber of Commerce, Lady Smith Downtown Business Association and Film Cowage Inn for review and comment prior to formal consideration by council. Is that a question, Mayor Stone? Or are you moving? Mayor Stone?
Would be happy to move the recommendation with one addition and that would be in film, North Island Film Commission. They brought us Sonic, they brought us Resident Alien. So they've also been part of what are seemingly the most successful film projects that we've had. So I think it's very important that we involve the North Island Film Connection Commission slash in film, which really are the the people that have driven the success that we've had in film and also worked with staff and applicants to ensure that community concerns are addressed in advance and knowledge of the town is is also very important. And they've always made sure we were in the loop when potential filming was coming to the town.
So are you
I would
amendment or are you adding to the, are you adding to the motion or?
I I was asking, gonna ask staff if it would be appropriate because frankly, from experience, if we're looking for a limited list, I would prioritize them film over film Cowage Inn. But if we can include
But if we can include them both, even better.
I'll go, I'll look through the staff for that.
Uh, through the chair, um, we certainly can refer it to them. We've had contact with them. So um, I think it's a good idea to consult with them. Okay, so I would move that committee direct staff to refer proposed Town of Lady Smith Film Bylaw twenty twenty, number twenty forty five to Lady Smith Chamber of Commerce, Lady Smith Downtown Business Association, Film Cowagin and the North Island Film Commission, AKA in film, for review and comment primer prior to formal consideration by council.
Donna, do you have that?
Yeah.
Okay, okay, that's moved. Do I have a second or? Moved by Counselor Patterson, uh, seconded by Counselor Patterson. Discussion? Counselor Stevens?
Thank you, Chair. Uh, so I I really like that we've uh, we've addressed this and I I think it was, it's really timely. I only have one uh small, um, it's, well, it's a couple of points, but it's it's in schedule four on page forty three. Just questioning whether these are are, I guess, competitive or sort of market rates on the 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 parking and the the two, the off-street and on-street parking and um, the outdoor washroom concession uh rates. Um, it just seems three year, three or five dollars is cheap for a parking spot, but if it's sort of the going rate on other productions, I would, I'd stop talking. That's my question. Thanks.
Through staff?
Uh, through the chair, uh, those rates are fairly consistent of what we've been charging to productions like Resident Alien and Sonic. Parking in Lady Smith is currently free, so it's hard to compare with other locales like Vancouver where most parking would be paid parking and they would calculate um, lost revenue from paid parking. Um, but generally speaking, it's consistent with what we've been charging um, and and probably fairly reasonable um, in terms of of use of the space. It it is a, something to consider is perhaps the cost is more relative to the extent of parking they need. If they only need four spaces, the cost maybe isn't that important, but if they need four hundred, um, then maybe the cost um, uh, the burden to the community is perhaps greater.
Follow up, Counselor Stevens?
Yes, ju- uh, thank you. Just just as as the Director of Development was ta- uh, talking, it it occurred to me, what is, do we have not to put on the spot, an idea of volume of spots that are taken up um, i- in the last couple of productions? Like, is it, is it four spots? Is it twenty spots? Is it?
Uh, through the chair, uh, it, in terms of off-street parking spaces, the volume is usually pretty high and and council will actually see when we bring the report forward for Resident Alien. The parking demand for off-street increased as a result of COVID because they can't have shuttle vehicles anymore. Um, street parking, um, most film productions uh are now, are working really hard to prevent disruption to business. So the street parking uh that they need for actual filming, um, they usually time it with the shots and so they might only need like, uh, I think I was looking at Resident Alien round two today and, you know, so they might only need like twenty or thirty spots on one day and then like ten spots the next day. Um, so it, uh, they do try to minimize that demand because they recognize that that does place a burden on businesses. The other thing that we've seen with more recent productions is they try to do it on an as-needed basis as well. So they they sort of reserve four spots, if you will, but they might only need two and they might only need them for two hours. Um, but they plan on seven just in case. Um, so the burden for street parking um recently has not uh, has not been extensive. Um, that could change depending on the production, though. The scale of the production, special effects, safety and so on.
Thank you.
Uh, Counselor Patterson and Counselor Johnson. Counselor Patterson?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, now the the recommendation is that this is going to go to those uh named groups, I guess, for their input and then it will be coming back to us with um, I guess, their additions. Is that correct?
Uh, through the chair, that's the idea. We'd like to refer it to those groups to get their feedback. We would implement their feedback and then likely what we would also need to do is have a legal review before we bought, brought it back for council, final council consideration. Um, so that would be sort of the next steps.
Okay, because one of the concerns I have in reading it, I only found um, one spot in here where and when I was reading it while I was camping, I didn't have any post-it notes, so I couldn't mark the page. Um, was the timeframe on getting notifications out. Um, on page seventeen, notice and consultation. Specific notification requirements require direct delivery to businesses and residents. That's one place. Um, on page fifteen, standardized notification mail or hand delivery business within specified timeframes. Um, and I think just one spot, it did mention uh, page twenty eight. Written notification shall be delivered and signed, it shall be posted no less than five business days. Um, so I'm waiting to hear back from the downtown business of the chamber to see what they think. But I don't think five days is is adequate, but if it's works for them, then that's fine.
Um, just to point on that through the chair, um, we uh, the policy also does allow a joint communication plan with the town and in and in that policy, the town could specify a longer notification horizon. We do have that power. Um, so for small, like say someone was uh, production was filming a TV commercial with a very small footprint, um, we might go with the standard notification because it's quick and easy and the impact on the community is low. But if a major film production um was gonna use all of First Ave for five days, we could use that joint communications plan um clause in the policies to require a twenty day lead time or a one month lead time or something like that. Um, so the standard notification was meant as like a bare minimum um, with the ability for the town to ratchet up notification requirements if necessary.
And and uh, if I can have a follow-up uh to, I guess, for uh Counselor Stevens on the rates charged, I'm just trying to find that page. You know, uh, what is it? A hundred dollars a day for the for the spray part? Really? All those kids are gonna miss out on the spray park and we get a hundred bucks? I'd rather see the kids using it for free. Is that, is that standard of all those rates? Um, going rates?
Uh, through the chair, um, we based a lot of the rates um for the rec facilities, we looked at existing rates we would charge to like a user group and some of them were uh increased, um, recognizing that opportunity cost of, for example, the kids not being able to use the spray part. Um, so we tried to make them um respective of what um, what is given up when when those are used by film facilities. Um, but we also tried to make them competitive. One of the things we've learned in discussions with the film industry um, is that um Vancouver Island is uh somewhat more expensive to film on because of the ferry costs of transporting film crews and uh whatnot from the lower mainland where many of those services are based. Um, so we are trying and those fees can be changed as we sort of discuss further um, the the bylaw. Um, but there is essentially a balance there between the fee charged um and and the cost.
Okay.
Counselor Johnson? Thank you. The only concern I have in regards to the recommended motion is you contact the Downtown Business Association and the Chamber. A lot of the businesses on First Avenue which should be affected and the building owners are not necessarily members of the Downtown Business Nation or the Chamber. Is there some way that we can have um confirmation that these two organizations will contact the businesses that are affected and the building owners?
Uh, through the chair. Sorry.
Yep, well.
Um, through the chair, uh, there is an O C P and zoning amendment um that is consequential to the film bylaw that would trigger a, that will trigger a public hearing. Um, so uh, anyone, any member of the public or any business will have the opportunity to speak directly to council before the bylaw is adopted. Um, we of course uh as well could um, uh, work with the Downtown Business Association and Chamber of Commerce uh to find out how to best notify those um, businesses and residents who are not members. And they can certainly contact staff directly with questions and concerns and we can factor that in um before we come back to council.
Thanks, Counselor Johnson? Thank you. Counselor McGee?
Thank you. Just quickly, uh, is there a specific staff person that business owners uh who might be impacted would contact? And are they aware of who that person is?
Uh, through the chair, yes, they would contact me. Um, and we can make uh uh, people aware of my contact information uh if they have questions about the bylaw. In terms of filming, uh, when filming is actually occurring, we now have new sort of uh, contact requirements of the film company and would establish sort of new brochures and whatnot. Um, so again, people would know who to contact when filming is occurring.
Counselor McGee?
I just think it's important that uh, people have a a Lady Smith's staff person to know that they can contact. And I think we need to be really clear with that. Uh, and I just wanted to confirm again, I think you said this, I just want to confirm it, that the new um permit application fees, they've gone up significantly from where they were. Uh, are we in line with other communities?
Uh, through the chair, um, I would say no, they are um quite a bit higher. Um, we don't necessarily have the same resources as other communities, so this is definitely a topic that um, the stakeholder groups we're referring to should discuss and as well something council should think about and discuss um, and before adopting the bylaw. Um, they have gone up, they are probably higher than some other communities. They're essentially determined based on the amount of work it takes us to process a um, film permit application. Um, so that number could be reduced significantly um, or kept the same or increased. Um, but it is a, there is sort of a discussion to be had there as to um, um, how much do we want to recover in terms of staff resources allocated to filming versus um, how uh, how low we want those prices to be for the film companies.
Okay, so I'll just finish off with, I think it's important that we uh try to be aligning with alike communities. So if we could get some information on the cost that other alike communities, uh, similar size and so on are are charging just, just for comparison, I'd be very interested. That's all. Thank you.
Thanks, Counselor McGee. Um, Mary Stone?
You know, once we get the feedback back from these groups, we'll have a little bit more clarity to the conversation, but the that provides concern for me in that if we're looking at like communities, we want to make sure it's like communities that actually have film, actually going to their communities. Um, and also just keeping in mind that if we're designated um, to to this point, we put the responsibility and the onus on the film company to bear most of the weight in terms of engagement with the businesses and working out those individual agreements. My concern would be that if we designate a staff person to do that, we're going to significantly increase the cost of the town and therefore the fees we would need to charge. Um, but like I said, I think those are all best washed out once we get feedback from the organizations on both sides of the issue, the business organizations and the film organizations as to where that happy medium might be.
Thanks, Mary Stone. When I was actually gonna think about that, because I was looking at the time thinking, I was just gonna remind the committee that we are only talking about referring this to uh, for further information to these groups. It will come back to uh, council for uh, formal consideration. So just prefer not to get too deep into the weeds at this stage. Uh, do I have anybody? No, I don't have anybody else on the speakers list. So seeing no more discussion. Oh, all those in favor of the motion? Opposed? I'm, Counselor Jacobson, was that just a late vote or were you opposed? Okay. Unopposed, so the motion carries. Thank you. Moving on to four point three, the permissive tax exemptions, the tax year two thousand and twenty. So the recommendation is that committee direct staff to one, provide a one-year permissive tax exemption to all properties currently identified in the two thousand and twenty permissive tax exemptions by law two thousand and nineteen, number two thousand and seventeen. Two, provide a ten-year permissive tax exemption for six thirty Second Avenue. Three, provide a ten-year permissive tax exemption for two twenty High Street. That was two twenty High Street. Four, not include the fully exempt properties on the water parcel tax or the sewer parcel tax. And five, prepare the necessary permissive tax exemption bylaws for council consideration. Are you moving that, Counselor Stevens, or do you have a question?
No, I I am, due to my position with the uh, the L R C A, um, which ro- directly relates to six thirty Second Avenue and three fourteen Buller and tangentially to two twenty High, I'd like to recuse myself for the item, please.
Thank you. Um, Donna or Erin, are you guys able to put the margin in the lobby? Oh, there he goes. Thank you. Okay, so, Mary Stone?
I'd move the recommendation.
So the recommendation is moved, seconded by Counselor Johnson. Discussion? Seeing none, like to call the vote. All those in favor? Opposed? Seeing none, motion is carried. I guess we can call Counselor Stevens back in? Yeah? Oh, he thought we were gonna be longer. He went to find his calf. Okay, uh, moving on to four point four, purchasing policy update. I'm pretty sure I know which way Counselor Stevens will vote on this one anyways. I think it came from him. So the recommendation is that the committee recommends that council approve the amended purchasing policy oh five dash seventeen ninety dash D as presented by the Director of Financial Services. Is that moved by Mary Stone? Do I have a second or? Seconded by Counselor Jacobson. Questions? Discussion? Counselor Patterson and then Counselor Johnson?
I guess that, well, this is a question through to staff. Uh, appendix B, the community benefit. I thought there was a um, eight percent.
Up to five percent is what the agreement was. Discussions, we can uh, double check that. I believe it was five percent.
Okay, I I personally would like to see it ten percent that way for local people because they're paying taxes, but that's a whole different discussion.
As your Counselor Patterson, uh, Counselor Johnson? The only question I have is why seventy-five, why not fifty?
It was just a number that kind of in, uh, I'm sorry, through the chair, a a number that kind of encompassed some of the changes that we had been approved through the uh, last year um approval since the last uh iteration of the purchasing policy. That's why seventy-five, that fifty uh is a number that can be worked with among staff as well.
Thank you. Counselor Stevens?
Uh, thank you. So um, I had to, I I think probably the the same question just um, in a way with Counselor Johnson. I think the thing that gave me pause is the the chart on page fifty when I looked at some sample projects that I I really like discussing and debating about and that we might miss out on that um to some extent. So I'm, I was uh, on the other side of the equation, though, I thought that um, the lower uh request number was was low and uh, I was thinking of a fifteen and fifty might be a sort of a solution because I, I think the, the lower number um, we had this discussion on on another matter a number of months ago around staff discretion. we had this discussion on, on another matter a number of months ago around staff discretion at lower numbers. We can quickly burn through staff time and by bringing relatively small and, and matters that we completely have the entrusted staff with doing. And, and, and using staff resources, which translates into money, to make decisions about small amounts of money that we probably would have all agreed with and, and because they were pragmatically the right decision. So I'd like to see the, the lower allotment raised, and I think the, the upper allotment brought down just a, just a bit.
Are you making an amendment, Councilor Stevens, because his motion has already been moved?
I would, I, I know it gets, it gets dicey around defeating motions or whatever. I would suggest, sure, I would suggest an amendment if that, if, if there was acceptance for that to.
If I can look it to our corporate officer, Donna.
Yeah, an amendment is certainly permitted. If you wouldn't mind just laying out exactly what you're, what you were wanting to amend.
Gotcha. Okay, so I would, let me, let me get the wording here. So I, I would, I would take the executive summary. The proposed amendment to the purchasing policy is an increase of the formal bidding process from 20, 25,000 to 50,000, and the informal bidding from 3,000 to 15,000.
Sorry, just a point of clarification, Mr. Chair. The resolution on the floor says that the committee recommend the council approve the amended purchasing policy 051790D. As presented by the Director of Financial Services, this amendment doesn't refer to the motion. It may be easier to defeat the motion and then make a new one.
Sorry.
Yeah. Thanks, Mayor Stone. That's why I was looking at Donna for that, because I was thinking there is no numbers in the actual motion. So I guess, I guess the easiest thing yet to do would be to, unless there's further discussion. We could vote on the motion, I'm kinda looking towards Donna here, vote on this motion and then see if there's, oh, Erin, Ms. Anderson.
Sorry, okay, I could just add a point of clarity there that the, one of the preambles in, in Councilor Stevens' discussion was that he wanted to have discussions about some of these projects that are coming. If there's a change to the budget for those projects, that still has to come to council. What isn't being coming, what is being discussed is how quickly we can award a, 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 a project to a bidder. Like oftentimes, we need to get a project done very quickly and don't have the lag time to put together a, a proposal, nor have the businesses bid on those proposals and then come and evaluate and then come back to council and say, here's what we're, what, what we've got. So, so you'd still, in the council realm, have to approve the project. It's just the quicker return round time to get a project off the, the ground. But completely can work within a $50,000 threshold or even increase in the lower limit. Purchasing policy guidelines, so not everybody will have the ability to approve a $15,000 payment or even a $5,000 payment, those still have approval thresholds that have to be, be met.
I have Councilor Johnson and Mayor Stone.
My question is, in the, in the executive session, it talks the formal bidding process from 25 to 75, informal from three to five. Two questions. One, what is informal bidding? And two, what happens in situations between the 5,000 and the proposed 75,000? How is that handled?
I'm just offering to. The informal bidding would be, say, we need to get an item that's low dollar value. It's just quickly phoning up a few suppliers and finding out what it, it is, what the price would be and going with the best value on that item. Between that, we then can get formal ones, so I want your request or your quote in writing so I can analyze it with all the requirements you're going to provide to me and then make a decision with all your, your bidding bidders around. The over 75 is then issuing that request for a proposal or request for a tender, all those different, different types of getting a supply of a project or a goods.
So there's still a form of bidding between the three and the 75, between the five and the 75. It's not a formal request for.
If I can have you look at page 58 of the agenda, it kind of shows what thresholds are and if it's in competitive bidding and you have to have the signatures or if it's in a informal or formal process, that's just kind of where the, the lines are drawn as well as who's got the approval to authorize the purchase.
Okay. Councilor Johnson, if you have a follow-up, we'll come to you, but we'll come back to you after Mayor Stone.
Okay.
I was just going to say, I think there may be some misunderstanding about what we're actually been put forward by staff. This is to reflect on the bidding process thresholds. This isn't a change, like if a project was approved and then it needs to be changed because of the budget needs to be higher. This is, and, and again, appendix A in the second attachment to the staff report says that the informal limit is 4,999, over 5,000 to 10,000 as a competitive bidding process with formal documents. 10,000 to 75,000 is a formal, again, but competitive bidding process, but a commitment document of the PO. So I'm quite comfortable with staff has proposed here. Again, we get the opportunity when we set the budgets for these projects. It's just allows staff to move forward with implementing those projects in a more realistic and expedient timeframe compared to when this policy was originally drafted and last adopted. So I will continue to support the recommendation that's here. Again, if there's a, A, we have to approve the budget to begin with. And I think this, these thresholds better reflect the realities of inflation. And frankly, I would say even some of these limits that are proposed would be actually, in terms of the projects that would fit into these envelopes, would be smaller in scale than they were when this existing policy was, was adopted based on the inflationary costs of public works projects and other things like that. So I'm quite happy to support the, the proposal that staff has put for us right now.
Thanks, Mayor Stone. Councilor McGee.
Thank you. If I'm not mistaken, this also takes into consideration emergency things that need to be done. So if there's a, some big repair needs to happen, it would allow the threshold for that project to go like in an informal manner as well. Is that correct? So that in a case where expediating is obviously the key in getting something repaired.
Yes, the community charter does provide, regardless of this policy, to do things in an emergency as long as we come back to council and have authorization for that.
Thank you.
Thanks, Councilor McGee. Okay, seeing no more discussion, I think it's time to probably call the questions. So we have a motion on the table. All those in favor? Opposed? Seeing none, the motion carries. Good discussion, though. Thank you. All right, let's move on to one that's I'm sure is gonna be real fast. 4.5, the tree bench and amenity dedication policy. The recommendation is that the committee review additional options provided by staff regarding the park bench donations guidelines policy 12-5810-A, and recommend to council with which option it would like to proceed. Is that moved, Mayor Stone, or do you have a question?
So just information for council. I'm really conflicted about this, and I think that that's why it's back at this table. And I appreciate the options that, that staff have presented. Frankly, I think option three is a stroke of brilliance, although there are some potential implications with when we have nowhere to put benches. Far down the road, many councils in the future that would have to deal with that. But I, I do like the thought, and I, and I want to read this for council because initially, when this first came to committee, the whole, I didn't recall the letters that I had sent to the donors of these important memorials to their family or whatever reason it was. But I think it's important to know that this was a form letter that I inherited. So I'm assuming previous mayor Hutchins signed many of these as well. And I just want to read what these letters say. In the very middle of the top of the letter in bold, it says, regarding your everlasting gift wooden bench and plaque. And the next line says, on the behalf of the town of Ladies Smith, I'd like to express our sincere appreciation for your gift to our community through the quote-unquote everlasting gift program. The park bench and plaque will be installed at Transfer Beach, and it goes on from there. The reason I want to highlight that is that, and this is no criticism of anybody, but through practice in the past, we created what was understood by the donors as an everlasting gift. And I don't know how we define everlasting, but in my, my world, everlasting is sort of forever and beyond. That being said, it's also important to recognize that the existing policy actually only says, and it's kind of, call it a weasel clause, if you will, that's not, again, any, towards anybody in particular, but often clauses like this. And it says, we would be maintained for a minimum of five years. So I've always said that if you want something to be included in something, it should be on the piece of paper the person signs when they make the donation, even if it's fine print, and it should be above where they sign so that it's understood that these are the provisions of the program. Now, right now, we do have two separate things. We have sort of an application process and then the policy. And I'm not doubting that those pieces are delivered and communicated to applicants at the time. But I also know in varying circumstances that when I make a donation and then I receive a letter from the mayor that thanks them for their everlasting gift, it's not any wonder that people perceive these as being everlasting gifts, not time sensitive or time limited gifts. And that's why I think I appreciate option three. I can, I can support any hybrid that would at least respect the donations that have been made in the past. I believe we have 91 benches. Look at the stat, in the 90s right now. But I'm really concerned about what it, what it means to somebody and, and reflecting on the cost. So if we develop some kind of a reserve fund or something like that to, to look after these donations in perpetuity, that it is obviously obvious that at some point we'd run out of spaces. Now, again, we're also talking about our OCP tonight, which means, talks about the growth of our community. And my estimate is, is before we ran out of locations that benches were needed, we would likely be expanding into new areas with new parks and new trails that may need benches in the future that would be available for donation. And I also feel that when I spent a significant amount of time during our break, or my break at the end of August, I made special, paid special attention to the benches, the locations, and especially some of the more recent ones that, that were important to me. And those, I believe, are necessary infrastructure for the town. In other words, if it were not donated, I couldn't find a single bench. I would say that doesn't belong here. And, and then the, the question becomes, if I'm down at the amphitheater, would we not have benches? Have they not been donated, or would we be paying for them and maintaining them in perpetuity, right? So I think of this in a very different way, that even if we've said in our, in the original proposed policy that we should have a 10-year limit because after 10 years, you know, they need some maintenance and things like that. And Councilor Johnson's rightly sort of wanted to understand what those costs are. And I think it's also fair to say that in the past, because of practice, staff wasn't kind of monitoring and tallying up the amount of maintenance that they were doing on them. But I think maybe looking at it at that level is kind of looking at it in the wrong way. When I stepped back from it, I looked at these benches and I thought, I sure would want a bench there had they been donated or otherwise. I've signed all these letters that thank people for their everlasting gift. I would be saying that those are community amenities enjoyed by all. And the fact that it means something to a family just makes it a little bit more meaningful and important. I would rather see us either keep it in our capital, we maintain other things that aren't donated, whether it's playground equipment. Well, that's another conversation for the kids, but the, the other amenities or the other facilities in our town, we maintain with tax dollars. So when somebody makes the initial donation to pay for the pad and get the, the unit installed, I'm of a completely different mind that I'm happy to share that burden long-term with the community in terms of maintaining those. So I thought the option three was a bit of a stroke of brilliance. How we address the potential 20 years down the road that we may run out of places to put benches, I think would be addressed by the addition of new parks, the expansion of our community, and new opportunities to install benches. So I don't pretend to have an answer. If I was going to lead to, lean on an option that was presented in this report, it would be option three. But I'm still very uncomfortable asking any previous donor to receive a letter saying in 10 years, you're gonna have a renewal fee. And I would much rather we embrace those donations as a community and continue to maintain and support them for the long term. So I'll leave it at that because I'm overly verbose as usual. But I just think it's important that we recognize that these aren't things we wouldn't really appreciate had they not been donated in the first place. And in many cases, I think they were infrastructure that was needed by the town that we would have, at some point, probably done on our own and maintained on our own.
Thanks, Mayor Stone. I have Councilor Johnson and Councilor McGee and Councilor Stevens. Were you, okay, you'll be after Councilor McGee. So Councilor Johnson?
Thank you. I agree with the mayor 100% in regards to the fact that these are community amenities that we would probably have put up ourselves or should have. The only thing that I would like to add that's a little bit different is I did a little bit of research in regards to the costing of benches. And I see benches as low as $768 with 50-year guarantees. You know, this is a long way from our $3,000 odd. And again, I talked to a contractor, asked how much it would cost to have the cement puddings, and it was less than $100. In addition, these ones that are made out of milk bottles, they have the plaque cast into the, the plastic itself. So I think we should maybe reassess what benches we're doing, making it cheaper also. And especially if they are going to be guaranteed for 50 years. So that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Councilor Johnson, Councilor McGee.
Thank you. It's difficult to argue with the logic of Mayor Stone in, in the fact that if people wholeheartedly believe these things would be around forever and ever, it's difficult to now put a year on it. That being said, the problem becomes somewhat exponential over time. We're gonna be looking at inflation, we're gonna be looking at maintenance. We're averaging, not including the first year where many benches were put up, but we're averaging about five benches a year. You can expect that to go up over time also as the population grows and it gains in interest and all the rest of it. I'm not disagreeing that we need to honor the ones that perhaps are already on the ground. However, there has to be some limit on how it goes from this point forward. And perhaps we have to say a limit of three dedication benches a year with the understanding that they have to be continually maintained. It's one thing to maintain about a maximum of $800 for repairing something as it was stated in the report. Another thing, if the thing gets burned and vandalized and has to be replaced, then you're looking at the same amount of money over again, less obviously, since the site's prepared. I just think we need to be a little more cognizant of the reality over time. Looking 50 years down the line, if this thing holds without any limitations on the output to the town, it could become quite an albatross. So whether we say a maximum of three benches sold or are used a year for dedication benches or whether we say five, whatever it would be, I think it needs to be part of the conversation because I do think we run a risk of just putting it out there and carrying it on the way it is. Either that, or we maintain the ones forever and ever and discontinue the program as far as I'm concerned.
Thank you, Councilor McGee. I've got Councilor Stevens next.
Thank you. So just touching on points that have been brought forward. I, I do think that we should honor the existing benches, and I do regard them also as an amenity. But I do sort of see, I guess, a few, a few things that come to mind. First and foremost, it's, it's noted in the staff report that, that the, the, the idea here is to come close to neutral, cost-neutral basis and providing access to as many community members as possible. I, I know there's maybe not a lot of difference between 3950 and 50. I, I know there's maybe not a lot of difference between thirty nine, 50 and 5,000. But I think when you get in the realm of $5,000, it becomes somewhat exclusionary. Um, and I don't know, is it completely eliminates, uh, the issue of potentially sort of subsidization by one group over another. Counselor Mackay's point about, uh, limiting the number or us getting in sort of a situation where we have too many, too many applicants for too many spaces, I think is potentially a, a risk. And so, um, I thought of the, the flag on the peace tower and the lineup there is if you register your kid today, they might get it by the time they record, they retire. I don't think it'd get that bad, but so. Um, so with those thoughts in mind of sort of a high price tag, getting out of the realm of many people's ability to, to pay unless it was a collective family effort. But if it was an individual or a, a surviving spouse, uh, I wondered if, and, and the potential for a logjam in terms of, of demand. I wondered too, if we, if we just, uh, have our cake and eat it too. We, um, we asked nothing of the people who've, who've been under, under the understanding that their gift was, uh, in perpetuity. We assume the responsibility for those community amenities and maintain them as needed out of parks budgets. Um, and I would, uh, suggest that I, Counselor Mackay suggested it. And I would, I think I'm, I'm there too in terms of discontinuing the program. Um, and offering up, uh, other alternatives, cheaper alternatives potentially. Uh, trees come to mind and there's a lot more perpetuity to, to a tree. It also fits in. This is maybe a grasp or a reaching, but into things like greenhouse gas strategies and such like that. So, um, I, I, there's a lot of good points to all the options, but I, I came back to it. And I, I really think that this is that the problems have been caused so far by the misunderstandings. We still run the risk of them in the future with some kind of, of program that advantages some disadvantages, others excludes some, um, includes others. Uh, I think we should, we should make a shift to, uh, the, a different type of amenity to offer up as a way to memorialize people. And, um, and I think at the same time, keep the, the ninety one or so benches that we have, take on the maintenance of them as amenities and, uh, I think put the issue to rest and it's, and hopefully is everyone satisfied. Thank you.
As Counselor Stevens, uh, Counselor Patterson?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, I, I like if we are going to make a change, uh, I like Mayor Stone would prefer, prefer option number three. Um, but just thinking about this, since it was brought up and, and the, the feedback from many people. We have benches downtown that, uh, we don't, uh, have dedication plaques on their town benches. And we paint them annually or every two years lamp standards, et cetera. So there is maintenance there. Um, we also in a mem- memor- trees in memory. We're not charging extra for those and those, those need to be watered every, every year. We weed around them. Um, so there's maintenance on everything. Um, I don't see in here looking at maybe, uh, down at, at the amphitheater off to the right-hand side, there's a rock down there. And, um, I forget whose names on there. There's four or five plaques on one side and a couple of plaques on the other. Could we investigate having benches with multiple plaques? Um, because is it the bench that people want to remember? Or is it the people and they're sitting there to remember them? And could we not maybe put plaques on some of our benches? And that way we can, um, uh, and, and maybe even approach, uh, some of the people that have already purchased benches in memory of, and this would take some balls, I guess, but it as, um, um, if we could put other plaques on those benches. So just an idea to fog everything up.
Thanks, Counselor Patterson. Um, I do have Counselor or Mayor Stone and Counselor Johnson, but, but that's going to be your second time around. So if I could just get my two cents in here. Um, uh, boy, a lot, a lot of good stuff has been said here. I just feel a need to kind of say, there was, I was going through the emails that were sent and I, I really appreciate that. It's a, um, it's an emotional issue for people. My kind of feeling need to stick up for staff and, uh, counsel on this. There was a lot of allusions that we were looking at this simply to add extra dollars to the town's finances. Uh, something about look elsewhere to a mass pennies. Um, I got to stick up for staff and, uh, counsel on this. That this, I don't think this was ever the idea. The, um, this is all about, um, just trying to be fair with these policies. So I just want to say that I'm, I have to, I appreciate what Counselor Stevens and Mackay were talking about. I just worried that that's a little bit of throwing the baby out with the bathwater. If we, if we just put it to rust, so to speak. But people are willing to buy the town and amenity and put it there for whatever reason. Um, I don't know if we should discount that. That's all. Um, I'm actually leaning towards number three too. I had a star and a question mark beside it because I did have some questions, but of them all, I appreciated that one as well. But anyways, that was just my two cents. So, uh, I'll go back for a second time around to Mayor Stone and then Counselor Johnson.
Oh, uh, just to be clear, I'm a hundred percent supportive of a hybrid model that looks at honoring the commitment or at least the perceived commitment that's been made for the existing fleet of benches and looking forward to a program that talks about renewal. Because anybody making that donation will understand the framework. And I would say as part of that, understanding that the form they sign better clearly detail those parameters before they sign on the bottom and hand their check over. Um, just, just to calculate it and understanding, you know, budget implications and things like that. Um, I'm not going to put Mr. Barfwood or any other staff members on the spot. But if the intention is after 10 years, we have a thousand fifty dollar renewal fee. It's about a hundred and five dollars a year over 10 years toward that bench maintenance or renewal or what have you. So for a hundred benches, we're talking about ten thousand, five hundred dollars per year after a 10-year period. Um, I again, looking at these as amenities. Um, and frankly, even on the Holland Creek Trail, having discovered so many wonderful places where I may want my bench to go, um, that I'm sure will be still available when I die. Um, I'm comfortable, I'm assuming the responsibility and the cost of maintaining those assets for the long term. And based on the, the, the five benches per year, which is about right, you know, it was 2000, it's 2020. We have around less than a hundred benches, so less than five per year. In 20 years, we may have another 100 benches. Um, I, I could, we could have like a council challenge, but I bet you we could find a hundred locations today where benches would probably be useful and, uh, very meaningful to people. And again, in reviewing the benches that I was able to come across over the last few weeks. Um, and as this conversations progress, um, I didn't find a bench that we would want there anyway. So then I asked myself, do we not have those benches at the amphitheater? If somebody doesn't donate them and people can just sit on the grass or do we want those benches that have the plaques on them? And I will say, having read some of the emails as well, I, I understand the emotionally charged nature of some of the thing. And this is not a, uh, you know, a place to pinch pennies. It's about responsibility to the community writ large, not just the 91 donations that we have. Um, but I'm, I, I'm also comfortable. If council wants to support sort of a hybrid model that honors the donations that we have and looks at a new fee structure moving forward, I think that's totally fair. We're not changing the parameters on somebody that, that, that they've made a commitment to. Um, but I'm also prepared to accept the burden, if you will, of that thousand dollars every 10 years per existing bench, which would be, you know, 10 years from now, according to the proposal by staff, uh, would be, you know, we're looking at nine or 10,000 dollar a year for the existing fleet of benches to cover those costs, right? And building that into our maintenance costs. And then however we deal with benches moving forward, um, I'm, I'm fine to, to support whatever fee structure or option is available from that. But the more we have a conversation, the more I feel like we're getting further away from an answer because now we're, now I'm thinking about picnic tables. Picnic tables don't cost the same as bench. They have bigger pads. There's different costs involved. Um, trees are different and they're not for in perpetuity. For example, one of the trees that is being contemplated at Aggie Hall is, uh, replacing a tree that was cut down because street trees and things like that. And, you know, landscaping features outgrow the size that was intended and they're cut down and replaced with a new tree. So then the question becomes with trees, do they, does, does that mean that's the end of the life for that donation? And we're looking for a new donation. Um, for example, the two dogwood trees on the, on the alternating corners of Robertson first, I believe the credit union donated one of them. So is the expectation that after that dogwood tree lives its life, we cut it down and we removed the plaque from the credit union that donated it for their anniversary. Um, so I'm just finding more questions, not answers. And my, my, my biggest pet peeve in local government is, uh, denial by delay. But I feel like I'm feeling the need to advocate for a more thoughtful discussion or finding a way to, like I said, I would be happy to move forward if we honor the existing benches and find a way within our hearts or a policy to, uh, maintain those, uh, donations uh, and put a new policy in place for any future donations. Um, but you know, I'll, uh, I'll work with council and support that however it is. But, um, I just think that these, you know, $20,000 a year, uh, 20 years from now to, to maintain a fleet of 200 benches, um, is not an unreasonable expense. And these are important and popular amenities in the community.
Thanks, Mayor Stone. I have Counselor Johnson next.
Question. We are about to receive 18 picnic tables for downtown. Are we asking the donors of those picnic tables to put money up for maintenance? Secondary, we have hundreds of, uh, bricks, memorial bricks in the amphitheater and some major plaques, uh, in that area notify, um, pointing out the donations and the special work that organizations have done. Will those be subject to, um, maintenance fees also? So, you know, let's get back to the motion and I believe the mayor made the motion that we accept, uh, option three.
Actually, I don't think any motions are made at all. He was just, uh, talking about what he would support. So let's, and I've still had good speakers this year. So, okay, Counselor Patterson, Counselor Mackay and Stevens. So Counselor Patterson?
Actually, uh, Mr. Chair, I was gonna, uh, make a motion that we adopt option number three.
Second. All right. So the motion is from Counselor Patterson, uh, second by Counselor Johnson. Just so we're clear, Counselor Patterson, you are moving.
Option three on page sixty-two, establish a dedication care fund, no renewal fee. And that exempts the existing one.
And I was saying it by Counselor Johnson. So any discussion? Counselor Mackay?
So the notion, maybe I'm getting hung up on this. I don't know. The notion of forever is a really, really long time. At some point, everything returns to the earth and dies a natural death, if you know what I mean. At some point, a, a bench is going to be damaged beyond repair uh, or just finally rot away. Are we saying that they will be maintained and replaced, not maintained, but actually replaced? Is that what we're suggesting? Is that actually replaced?
Okay, sorry. I'll, I'll pass that question on to staff.
Oh, oh. Uh-oh. I've lost you all.
Nope, you're there.
Okay, sorry. Through your chair, um, the dedication fund would be a reserve of, um, funds that would go towards maintenance or replacement if needed. Um, I, I, it is a long time to think that far ahead. The benches do have a projected lifespan that we've learned of 20 years. So, yeah, replacement will be inevitable at some point and that has to be a consideration.
Okay, so.
Paula?
Yeah, I just want to make the comment that that's what's, that's what's concerning me is that it, and I get that they're amenities. I get that we maintain our amenities and they're, and they're wonderful. But it, there has to be some kind of bookends on it somehow. And I think the notion of a maintenance fee is going to be great until it's sadly, um, not enough, like so short of what's needed for maintenance and all the rest of it. And, and I also think we need to make sure that we're watching how many we're putting in just because I think it could get out of hand. And I, I'm, I know I'm sounding like I don't think it's a good prod or program. I do think it is, but I'm just not, I'm not sure that it's enough just to do this. So.
Thanks, Counselor Mackay. Um, Counselor Stevens, I had you on the speakers list before Counselor Patterson brought the motion. So would you, would you still like to speak?
If I can unmute myself, yes, I will. So, uh, I guess, um, I thought I saw the emergence of, of consensus on a few points, but I'm not, I'm not sure here. So under option three, we would have, um, uh, existing bench, uh, donors. Um, uh, under no obligation to contribute, which I think we, we agreed, uh, that, that that was fine. Um, we would have, uh, amenities added, which we all agreed was, was fine. Um, but you do have a, a new, a new fee added to those who want to enter the program. Um, that again, I think that, I think the price is getting, getting high. And I, I think we don't have to go this far. I think we can, we can, um, we can say thank you for the donation to cover the initial cost of the bench. And then we as, uh, as a community absorb the cost of maintenance of that amenity. And to Counselor Mackay's point that if it's, if at such a time, the, the, the bench is irreparably damaged, uh, is in a location that's deemed not to maybe be the best, that could be written into the policy as a, as a sort of, uh, to people coming into the program to say that we're going to, we're going to honor and, and, um, and maintain this bench as long as, as, as absolutely feasible. But in the event that it was, you know, just repeatedly destroyed or something like that because of a location, um, that we, that it might, it might in fact go away. So, um, so I can't, I can't support option three for those, those reasons in my mind. I think in, in a way it comes down to, um, it comes down to fairness. I, I think we would all, um, there are people who are going to be, uh, wholly against us, uh, paying for someone else's, the maintenance of someone else's bench. Uh, there's going to be people who are very much for it. And I think the best way to, to strike some fairness between those two, uh, extremes is to just as- assume, uh, the cost of maintenance a- across the whole community. So that a hundred and five dollars a year becomes, uh, fractions of a cent to, to everyone involved. Um, and if we're not going to do that, then I would, I would come back to my original point. If we look at other options, uh, um, I mentioned trees. I know in a recent trip to Victoria, they had all around, they've got, um, uh, resin, like, like composite resin Adirondack chairs, which I think would be a nearly permanent so- solution and a lot more flexibility in terms of locations. Um, but with the options on the table, I can't, I can't support three at this point. Thank you.
As Counselor Stevens, I've got Mayor Stone and Counselor Johnson.
Yeah, and as much as I said, I liked option three and I, I appreciate the creativity. I wasn't ready to support it as it, as it's presented either. Um, I was more looking at, um, you know, sort of moving forward and how do we deal with the existing, um, the existing benches in a way that doesn't then shift the burden. I did, I, I think 5,000 might solve the problem for us because I'm not sure at that level, we'd get a lot of those donations. So again, I think that, um, my only concern is that whatever policy change we bring forward, that we find a way, uh, to, um, preserve the implied commitment that we've made to the previous. to preserve the implied commitment that we've made to the previous donors. I find those letters based on my understanding of the program and I'll admit some ignorance, not understanding what the time limits in the policy were. But when I get presented with the form letter that we give to folks when they make a donation and admittedly, I've made some edits to some of the verbiage if I had a special note to share with somebody. I can't in good conscience support any change that would not honor the previous donations. How will we deal with new donations coming forward? I'm open to, this is one option. But I think if if this is an option, the fee itself needs to have a little bit more thought to it to make it still attractive enough for people to do. But I think that, you know, when we're when we're talking about all of these other amenities that we're allowing to be donated. You know, the the title on the on the agenda item here says tree bench dedication amenity policy, but we're having an extensive conversation about the benches, but none of the other amenities like the picnic tables, as Counselor Johnson said, and that perfectly highlights my point. Council is prepared to move forward with grant funds, et cetera, and grant and aid funds that we didn't disperse to pay for these with no donations. The community came forward, the business community, the service clubs came forward and said, we want to make these donations to you. All we want in consideration for that is a plaque. So now that makes those amenities more affordable for the community with me having the expectation that they would be maintained to some degree over time, right? I don't know. I just feel like there's so many moving parts here that we still haven't zeroed in on something that I'm comfortable supporting. I can't support the emotion that's moved the emotion. There's so much emotion involved. But the motion that's been moved, because I think we're not looking at the whole issue. And I hate, you know, it's a strong word, but I get very frustrated by issues like this because we're spending an inordinate amount of time trying to solve a problem. I'm not really sure that we had based on 91 benches and $1,050 after 10 years to replace, maintain or whatever. The value of those amenities to the town, just like the tables downtown that the town was willing to purchase and then take on as our own assets. Yeah, I I don't know. I'm struggling with this one, but I can't support the motion that's on the floor.
Thanks, Maristone. Counselor Johnson?
Thank you. Just a solution that may be approbable. Could we not send letters out to the people who have donated benches and asking them to recognize that forever is impossible for us to honor? Would they accept 100 years as a deadline? And in some cases, you'll find that these people, families have moved on and have even basically forgotten about the situation. So there are some benches that are pioneer families like mine and the Knights and the Dabs, et cetera, which they will want to carry on generation after generation. But somebody who's moved here 10 years ago and just lived here and their families live elsewhere. That bench may not mean that much to them. So if we send a letter out asking if they could would consider this and if we pick a date like 100 years, you might get all the understanding you need. Suggestion. Thank you.
Thanks, Counselor Johnson. I think we've pretty well gone through this as much as we can. So I'm going to call a question on the motion on the floor, which was to support option number three. So all those in favor? Opposed? Motion is defeated. So now we're do we look to staff on this? Are we done? We're still on this recommendation, right?
Well, I'm just wondering if council or the committee would like another iteration of of the the options to come back at a future meeting and it would just be helpful to rein in what it is that we need to be getting the details for it and bringing it back to council. If it's a hybrid model, we can do that research and bring that back to a future meeting if it's yeah, all the other options is just if we believe that we were trying to get the information that council and the committee had discussed and brought back for this consideration. So if we're not going to have a vote on this one, if we could just have some details direction as to what to come back with in the future.
I appreciate that. And I see a bunch of hands up. I just, yeah, I mean, I think that's actually a great idea because from what I heard, option three was close. There was just because it did acknowledge the families that had already donated the benches. But it also, as Counselor Mackay had pointed out, it shows that there's also a cost and nothing is forever for the people that do want to do it. It seemed like it was a cost. So I will go to the speakers list because I saw a whole bunch of hands up. So if we can put our okay, I saw Counselor Stevens, Counselor Mackay, Maristone. Oh, no, Maristone, Counselor Johnson. So Counselor Stevens?
Thank you. So I don't, I don't know whether we'll resolve tonight or or move this on to a future meeting, but I think the things that I would like to see are donors to date. Status quo, no, no request of them for future maintenance. I think I'd like to see a a price set for future donors that didn't include no time limit, just an understanding that you were giving this gift and it would be maintained as a community asset for as as long as feasibly possible. And in some cases, that might be if it's in a shaded wetter spot, that might be shorter. If it's if it's brutally vandalized at some point, that might be shorter. But in general, I mean, the it's noted in the report that between $100 and $800 scenarios, there's very few $800 scenarios. So I think I'd like to see those points and whatever policy comes out and keep it, keep it very simple. Another thing I'd like to see is maybe an op, another option or two for I don't want to use the word cheaper, easier to afford amenities that people could add in in as a memorial to their their families and loved ones. So those would kind of be the points I'd be looking for in whatever we chose. Thank you.
Ms. Stevens, Counselor Mackay?
Thank you, and I'll try to keep it really quick. I get if I if I synthesize what I would like to see in something coming forward, I think I would like to see something that had an understanding for people that after a point in time, it's no longer replacement. After a point in time, it's allowed to just go by way of nature. And whatever that needs to be. And that's even for the existing understandings that we have with benches that are currently there. After a certain point of time, it is no, it is no, no longer expected that the bench be replaced. That then allows the space to be opened up for other people to use for donated benches or dedications or whatever. And I and I think we, the the point was made up about the benches or the tables downtown and all the rest. They're quite different in that they're not memorial. And I think the emotion comes into this issue because they're memorializing. That's all.
Thanks, Counselor Mackay. Counselor Johnson?
I think this is an ideal opportunity for the mayor to point to task force. Staff is very busy. We can do a lot of the legwork and come back with a recommendation to council.
Well, that's not definitely not my call to make. My opinion would be I'm thinking that staff has a pretty good idea for this conversation. So but anyways, I will go to Counselor Patterson and then Mayor Stone.
Thank you. Whatever staff comes back with, but I would like to see included in in the report back whenever it comes, and I don't anticipate it being rushed. Alternative to benches, maybe concrete benches instead of wood, ones that require less maintenance. And and maybe we could solve it there. And also maybe like down at the amphitheater, possible locations where we could put some sort of monument where plaques can be attached. And so there's three or four or five plaques. So families can go to that particular spot and remember their loved ones. I'm done.
Thanks, Counselor Patterson. Mayor Stone?
Just I'm feeling a little sense of irony here because a lot of what I'm hearing sounds like the existing policy. That says we will do, we will maintain for a minimum of five years. And after that point, the plaque would be relocated to another place like sort of a a central collection point that if the, you know, for five years, if the existing policy says we will definitely maintain it in this condition with the plaque beyond five years, there it's anybody's gamble, right? Now, again, the challenge is is that the understanding that people seem to have is different than what the existing policy actually says. But what it sounds like we're discussing is probably a better fleshed out version of the existing policy with a little more updated and thoughtful interpretation. And as I would say, it clearly lined out in the in the donation that there's that time limit and any up until that point, you can be assured it's there, whether it's five, 10 or 20 years. But beyond that, that the if the bench is damaged or rots or whatever, that the bench would be removed and that spot would be opened up for somebody. We would take the plaque and and reinstall it at this other location. I'm not sure if that's how the ones got on the rock or not, but anyhow, the only other concern I have is that i- if there is, if staff feels that they're going away from this with some sense of a common understanding and desire of counsel, because I'm not sure I see, I hear that. I'm still quite concerned about the existing benches and the letters that I've signed. And I know that's my cross to bear and I'll go with the the fallout if we decide to change the policy on the existing benches. But I would like to see an alternative where we honor the existing donations and then talk about how all future donations would be handled. Because and again, maybe it's just because those benches that maybe we wouldn't have put in place or in places where I would never discover them. But all the ones I have been able to discover, like I say, you know, if they weren't donated, would we have not put benches around the amphitheater? Or would that be it? Like, I can't imagine those benches not being there. So then the question becomes if those donations weren't there, would the town have put in benches at our own cost? And then maintain them at our own cost. So I'm quite comfortable maintaining the donations that have been made in the past and putting a policy in place for all future donations. But I'll eagerly anticipate, but hopefully not too soon, a updated ideas from from staff. And I'm sorry, Counselor Johnson, as much as I love task forces, there are heavy lifting on big issues. I cannot see us spending time myself. I will not appoint a task force to deal with bench dedications or or other amenities.
So I'm going to look to staff and Ms. Anderson. Do you, do you feel that you guys have enough of the gist of this conversation? To maybe go away? Or or do you need a motion for us to ask you to come back with something in the future?
We would still require a motion, but I believe that we have captured that basically a status quo for the donors to date, future donors as long as possible for the benches. It's almost a number two. And other options for cheaper memorial, other options for memorializing people and as well as other options for materials that can be used. And so if the committee would like to refer that back to staff for consideration with all those points, I think we can work with with that.
Mayor Stone?
I would move that the tree bench and amenity dedication policy be referred back to staff with the provisions outlined by our acting CIO, Ms. Anderson.
Are you seconding Counselor Patterson? Are you? Okay. So the motion has been moved to second any more discussion. As hearing none, I'll call the vote. All those in favor? Opposed? Unopposed, the motion carries. Thank you. Okay. Moving on to council submissions. So 5.1, protection and dedication of parklands. Counselor Stevens has requested that the committee discuss potential plans for the protection and dedication of parklands. A list of dedicated parks is included for background information. Counselor Stevens, I'll pass it on to you.
Oh. I thought I thought lifeguards came first, but
Oh, not on mine.
Oh, okay.
Mine lifeguard is second.
So yeah, so as as one of the points in our strategic plan was to dedicate parkland. And so I guess my and I've I've had a bit of interaction with staff around potential sites for parkland. I guess what I didn't envisioned, going back to the strategic planning discussions and the thoughts I've had in the past couple of weeks, knowing this was coming up, was that hopefully we could, we could direct staff to assemble a list of town owned properties that are the intent was for them to be parks or it would probably be advisable for them to be the parks and we could wrap it up in a it's the only time you'll ever hear me be in favor of an omnibus motion, but an omnibus motion to dedicate all those pieces of property en masse as parks to protect them in perpetuity. And then put benches in them. No. So so that was my thought on it and nothing super complicated, just just sort of wanting to check a box in the strategic plan.
Thanks, Counselor Stevens. I've got Mayor Stone.
Box checker. I believe the strategic priority was to about dedication of existing parks that haven't been dedicated, formally dedicated. So my question through the staff is that I understand sometimes neighborhood parks, there's good logistical reasons why they aren't dedicated because as communities grow and change, there may be a necessity or a desire as demo and psychographics change in neighborhoods, for example, to either change those parks or to invest in new parks, you know, sort of in an area. I'm thinking of like some of the smaller community park playgrounds. There's a couple I remember, you know, from that long time ago when we had a playground age child. That seemed like every time we went there, we were in a neighborhood that we were traveling to this neighborhood park to use the playground because it was such in great shape because it was rarely used. So I'm just wondering, like, when staff, when we work through the strategic item, there's obviously some larger parkland for with ecological values and things that I would very much like to see dedicated and sort of additional protections. But was the intent of staff to protect all of those little nodes in neighborhood parks as well? Or how would staff understand that strategic priority item, I guess, would be more appropriate, the question?
Through the staff?
From discussions with staff, we believe the intent of this one is to put more the strict restrictions on the existing parks, like the ones that are listed as a fee simple park versus an actual dedicated park. And that was the end, my understanding. I'm going to actually call on our Director of Infrastructure Services and our approving officer. If he, if he can come on and maybe help shape the 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 discussion because it was his request that we can change some of the ways these things are dedicated through subdivision versus just dedicated as a as an item in land titles.
Yeah, sue the chair. So I think the intent here was exactly, you know, what what the mayor is talking about is is to look at pieces of land that were had the intention of being parks, but weren't actually dedicated as parks. If land is taken through the subdivision process as parks, we're allowed to take up to 5%. That land has to be dedicated as parks. So there aren't if if in the past, those weren't dedicated as park, we should be going back and dedicating those part as part because that's how they were taken and that's how they're supposed to be. But there are lots of other parks that we've taken during other processes that don't require them necessarily to be park. And I think, you know, the best approach is to bring back a list of all the parks, including the small little tot parks that we have. And we can have that discussion with council and we can go through them. I mean, it's not like there's that many of them. We can go through them one at a time and and I mean, it's not like there's that many of them. We can go through them one at a time and and uh, we can look at the status of them, whether they should be parks or whether they shouldn't, and then go through the dedication process as necessary.
Thank you.
Counselor Johnson? Could this not be encompassed on your official community plan review? Just off?
Through the chair. Um, I mean, I guess it could be, but I don't think that's, I don't think that's um, necessary. I I I I don't think this is required in the uh, official community plan. I mean, it's giving um, direction as we move forward, but these are things that have happened in the past and and I think we just weren't looking at them at this point, and I don't think it needs to be part of the OCP.
Hold up, Counselor Johnson? Follow up. But over the next 10 years, we're having more margin subdivisions and we'll probably be accepting some of that land as parkland. So if we have a full policy in place, it would make it out easier. Thank you.
Through the chair, absolutely. So if if council wants to give us um, a direction on um, park policy about obtaining new parks, that that would be um, really good and included in the OCP. But what I'm just referencing is is land that's already there that has been given as park, taken as park, or whatever the case may be in the past, is looking at that and getting that organized.
Thank you. Uh, my speakers list has Counselor Patterson, Counselor Mackay, and then Mayor Stone. Counselor Patterson?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. My um, first take on this when Counselor Stevens was talking was basically, any town owned property right now, he wanted to take in and do an omnibus policy and dedicate it all as parkland. Um, that's how I understood. Hopefully I'm wrong.
You are.
Oh, good. Um, but from the sounds of this is going to be coming back to us anyways, but on this list, I don't see lot 108. Uh, this list of dedication parks, and I don't see the Holland Creek Trail. And then just one other one, the Senate half. Now does that, this, the Senate half park include the area at the end of the cul-de-sac? Um, Simon Street, or is it just the Senate half? Because there's the Rotary Peace Park there. So and again, don't need answers right now on this, but that, that's just what I noticed right off the top is that Holland Creek Trails isn't on here, lot 108, and that whole area. So. I anticipate it coming back, so there'll be further discussion.
Okay. Counselor Mackay?
My question was concerning the OCP discussions that are upcoming and how it would play into it. I think I have better understanding now. Thank you.
Okay, uh, Mayor Stone, and then Counselor Stevens.
Yeah, and I had that on my list actually for the OCP was to identify uh, areas where new parts would be desired and ecologically sensitive areas and stuff that we may want to kind of cast out there for the future um, as priorities to get as park through subdivision or what have you. Um, but um, now that I understand this is going back to that we, the existing parks, there's a bunch that aren't dedicated. Staff will bring back for report. We can review it and then go through the formal dedication process as part of that discussion. So I'm good with it for now and thanks Counselor Stevens for bringing it up, but I think uh, A, we've got a job to protect the existing parks, especially the ones where kind of statutorily obligated to do so. Um, and B, um, looking forward to uh, that conversation as part of the OCP.
Did I your motion there? Oh, sorry. Counselor Stevens is on this.
Um, I, uh, it's not every piece of uh, of of town owned property, Counselor Patterson. Although that would start a debate. So uh, no, what I, I think I, I, the term that's that's uh, knocking around in my head after discussion is, uh, this is housekeeping. That, and so I guess if I were to make a motion, it would be that staff uh, bring a, a list of um, of, of uh, properties that that uh, could or should in their opinion be dedicated as parklands to council for consideration.
Are you making a motion, Counselor Stevens?
Yes.
All right, uh, secander, Counselor Patterson? Uh, discussion on the motion. Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed? Not opposed, motion carried. Thank, thank you. Moving on to five point two, lifeguards at Transfer Beach. So Counselor Tannen and myself has requested that the committee discuss the possibility of offering lifeguard supervision at Transfer Beach in 2021. Pass email correspondence is attached for background information. Let me start the saying is that I, I'm sure I found everybody rolled their eyes when they saw that this was part of the agenda. But there was two things, uh, one thing that's new that uh, happened and that, and just another thing. Um, the first thing was whenever we had this debate this year, it was all about this summer.
I just wanted to get on your speakers list, Jeff.
Okay, you're on there early. Um, in our, in our previous discussions, it was always in the lens of getting it done for this summer. And so I knew that that was um, impossible to get done, which is why I like to focus on 2021 because even if we are tired of the subject, there is an appetite for it in our community. Which leads me to number two, which is why I put this back on the agenda, was I was approached by a service club asking me about next summer. And so I explained how I had understood it from staff that there was s- uh, certification issues and staffing issues. I was unclear on the liability issue, but anyways, um, this person in the service club said, well, if we start it now, if we find people that want to be certified, we might look at paying their wage for next summer uh, to be lifeguard down at Transfer. So I thought about it after he brought it up and I thought, wow, that's uh, to me, that was enough to bring it forward at least for discussion at, at this meeting. Um, so that's why it's on the table. So I understand that Mayor Stone is chomping at the bit because he was early and then Counselor Patterson, so I will go to Mayor Stone.
I just want to float out there so I can throw jellyfish again. Also, I many, many summers we were down there and uh, you know, we ran around on the logs and slipped and hit our heads and uh, and threw jellyfish on the, on the dock, et cetera, but um, so I understand also there's a, a, not an insignificant capital cost um, for the floats, for example, and ropes to delineate the uh, the area. I know that when um, our previous director was here, we did get a a, a semi detailed presentation on, on the upfront costs. Um, so you know, in the lifeguarding tower and all the equipments and things like that, you know, you gotta have that baywatch. It looks like a little squid you hold under your arm and you run into the water, all that kind of stuff. But just to understand, I'm really supportive of the concept. Um, I'm just not sure that the cost of the lifeguarding itself is the biggest challenge. And I know in the past, um, some of the challenge was that some of the lifeguards may or may not be available each day. And then what happens if you've committed to having lifeguards and they call in sick and you don't have coverage? So my question through the staff is you have a lifeguarded beach and you get up in the morning and your staff all calls in, you got no coverage. Uh, you have no lifeguard at the beach. How do you do that? Do you just put up the sign in the life ring and say have at her, or do you need to do something more dramatic, like close the swimming area?
Uh, through your chair, Mayor Stone, I think the ideal situation would be to have enough staff trained in-house that you would have that backup in case those scenarios did arrive. Um, if you did reach a situation where you did not have lifeguards to guard that beach, it would need to be closed. Um, which would lead to expectations from the public of having that service but not being there to be met. Um, but training staff is is very doable. Um, it's a waterfront option on there already, the National Lifeguard Certificate that all lifeguards hold. It's a separate component that gives them that waterfront certification. Um, so the certification isn't a challenge. It's definitely a challenge this year with COVID. But under ideal situations, it's not a difficult thing for, for lifeguards to have. We currently have two to three lifeguards with that certification, whether they're current, I'd have to go back and check. But again, under ideal situations, you would want probably a minimum of five certified lifeguards in the waterfront. Three, that would be there daily to cover shit, like cover breaks, and two to be their um, eyes on the water. And you would want those other two there in case a situation where a lifeguard may be sick or are unavailable for a shift.
And then that would be lead due to seven day a week, non-till dusk kind of coverage?
Yeah, I think through the chair, Mayor Stone, um, in the past, hours have varied. I believe Lady Smith has had lifeguards from 12 till 5 or 1 till 5, depending on budgetary constraints or what the budget looks like. You would set those shifts, whether it's a five day a week or a seven day week. Um, again, that would come down to the budget. Um, staffing is the one aspect of it, but you, you did hit on something and it's the infrastructure upgrades that would need to be made as well, that needs to be considered and they're not dramatic costs, but they are costs on top of just having the staff there on site. Um, I think, I believe it was in 2017, lifeguards were there to do special events. Um, and prior to that, maybe even during a shutdown when the pool was not available for the public. Um, that was a service that the town provided. But, yeah.
Can I just have one, one follow up? I snuck an extra one in there. Any, any sense at all of the magnitude of capital costs? You need probably a lifeguarding tower and obviously some accoutrements to outfit them. Um, and then those uh, sort of swim ropes delineating the area and stuff like, you know, not holding you to it by any means because I'm sure we'd need a staff report back. Um, but do you have any sense of those capital costs?
Um, well, like the, the rescue board, that's a requirement, which is a big one. That's, that's over a thousand dollars. Um, rescue tubes, I mean, they're minimal. They're about a hundred dollars each. You would need one per lifeguard. You would need a specialized spineboard, um, oxygen. Um, other aspect of this is prior in the past, there was um, an area set up as a first aid room. So there would have to be that lifeguard station and first aid aspect to, to reactivate again and seeing what's available down there and in a suitable form or, or shape that can be used for that.
Yeah, I believe it used to be half the concession, if Jeff might be able to confirm that. It was the one, the side of the concession with doors open to the wall. But we may have to keep that building after all. Okay, thank you very much.
Uh, Counselor Patterson was a, I see you.
There I am. Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, the mayor asked some of my questions when, when um, Mr. Barfoot said five people, so that is uh, that's five to cover one or two shifts a day, seven days a week, right?
Uh, through your chair, Counselor Patterson, it's, basically you would need three lifeguards per day. Um, the reason I said five was under the circumstance that maybe a lifeguard called in sick or was unavailable for the shift. You would have another person in your inventory that is qualified to go and replace that person.
Okay, so now, um, I guess probably the, these questions would be for, for, well, any staff member, but um, I would like to know what other communities have done because I know a lot of communities have quit lifeguards because mainly my understanding is because of the liability issue. And I would like to find out why, what communities have uh, lifeguards and what don't. And if they don't have them, why? Um, check on what our, our insurance costs would be if we had lifeguards. And uh, where, and I tried to find it, uh, maybe it's, it's in my imagination, but there has been municipalities, uh, as I remember sued uh, for mishaps at, at the beach where there has been lifeguards. Um, and uh, I would like, need to know the costs, um, wages, benefits, insurance, change rooms, et cetera. Um, and the um, the boys to, to define the area. And just to update Counselor Vertanen, that was one member of a service club uh, that hadn't talked to the service club beforehand.
Fair enough.
Thank you. I just want clarification on my understanding. In the event that we start having a lifeguard, say, I don't know if it would be dusted on, that seems lofty, say eight hours a day. Is it then the understanding that anytime that, that beach is not under the watchful eye of a lifeguard, then it would have to be shut because of liability because that, that big expectation is, is quite huge. And I just wonder if it opens us up to greater liability or greater difficulty. Uh, because we do have sometimes got lifeguards as opposed to never, which when you never have a lifeguard, everybody knows they're on their own.
Yeah.
Uh, through the chair, uh, Counselor Mackay. We would fall in the same situation that we're currently in with proper signage. Um, and notifying the public of the hours of those lifeguards and when they're on duty or off duty. It would need, need to be clearly defined and communicated to the public of what those hours are. So that that expectation is that when the public's there during a lifeguard's uh, supervised time, that the lifeguards are there. And if they're there outside of those hours, that they would be there using it similar to where they are today.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Stevens?
Thank you. So uh, um, hearing what, what uh, colleagues have said, I'm wondering if I can make a motion that uh, staff uh, at a future council meeting return with a, a breakdown of capital, uh, human resource and insurance costs involved in uh, in, in, installing. Um, and then I would speak to that motion um, with a level of skepticism, but I'd like to know those numbers because as I went through the, uh, cost, logistics, HR shortage, cost again were the points I made, but I'd make that motion to find, find out because I feel I'm speculating at this point.
I'll second it by you, Mayor Stone? Seconded by Mayor Stone? Uh, Counselor Stevens, do you want to speak to that now or do I go to Mayor Stone?
So yeah, so I mean, I kicked, I kicked this around a lot. I mean, I, I had a twinge of nostalgia myself. I learned to uh, I didn't go to swimming lessons in a pool. I went on a raft in Lake Ontario and it was probably something that would make an insurance salesman shudder nowadays, but um, but uh, exactly. And um, I also sort of entertain, I, I thought if we're doing this, uh, we're probably, if we're making an investment in, in capital infrastructure, it's not a one summer or two summer COVID affair. Um, so we could be in a situation where we're um, we're looking at lifeguards at the pool uh, and then lifeguards also at the beach, so um, which would create a cash and a HR crunch potentially, you know, two, three years down the road. The other uh, question in my mind was um, uh, could we add value by having swimming lessons down there at the same time, but the attending lifeguards wouldn't necessarily be able to do that. But at least you would be um, you'd, you'd be adding some social value, I guess, if, if not uh, financial value to the whole equation. So those, those are the things I'm kicking around in my head, but until I know the um, the costs involved, I don't, I, I don't think I can, can make a decision on one way or the other.
Thanks, Counselor Stevens and Mayor Stone?
Yeah, I feel even more nostalgia, not necessarily just for the uh, childhood experience, but for the semi annual report on lifeguards from staff, so. Mr. Barfoot, I'm sure you could dust off an old report and update some of the numbers and, and minimize the amount of work that's required, but um, you know, I think, I, I'm sure council, some people may have saw that I sent a picture to council via text and about something that I really wanted to see us have down there, one of those sort of like bouncy play parks out on the water. So I'll, I'll definitely support it if that's included. But um, in all seriousness, I think that um, it's wonderful if we can afford it. And I think that's what it's always come down to is the cost. And just that expectation that we set. So you know what it's like when, when an implied expectation is not met. So if somebody decides they're gonna come down from Duncan and they love Transfer Beach Park and they're going there with their family because they can relax while the kids play in the water and they know there's a lifeguard there. And just happens that day that, you know, a couple lifeguards are sick and they're called through the call. And just happens that day that, you know, a couple lifeguards are sick and they're called through the call, roll call. And and I'm away on vacation with my parents and, you know, I'm camping and we can't get that coverage. And the family comes down and it says no lifeguard on duty. And and I and I fear that that may happen more than we think. And it's not a criticism of the profile of a lifeguard because I know I've, I I'm sure that all the dedicated lifeguards out there. Um, it's a great place to be. And from all the TV shows I've seen, it's pretty well the coolest job on the beach in the summertime. But we also know that, you know, that um, when I was younger and what I would consider probably prime lifeguarding age, there are times when uh other priorities took place over my job. And I may be sick tomorrow because what's happening tonight is just too exciting to pass up. Um, so I actually think we have to be aware of also the unintended consequences and whatever the costs are that come back. Um, that we also understand that we're creating expectation of a certain level of service. And it'd be really disappointing for folks if once, twice, thrice in the summertime, the beach says no lifeguard on duty and what their expectations have um won't be met. Um, right now, there's an understanding that, you know, we all have to take personal responsibility for our families down there and watch out for each other. Um, and there's a tool there if needed. Um, so anyway, I'm fully supportive if it really seems like we can do it, but I just worry about those unintended consequences.
Thanks, Mayor Stone. Um, nobody else on the desk, so maybe I will run, will square the circle since I was already brought it forward. Just a couple of things. Um, oh, okay, after me, Counselor Johnson. Um, thanks, Counselor Stevens, for the nostalgia trip. I actually took swimming lessons at Transfer Beach because we didn't have a pool. Um, and uh, as far as the uh replacement goes, um, I don't, Fuller Lakes got um, got like cars there. And I don't know, maybe there's a difference being a lake and being on the ocean. I don't know. But I don't seem to hear from too many people that they have a staffing issue. So I don't know if there's some type of secondary thing that they have with with Duncan or, I don't know. I I don't know the ins and outs, so I'm gonna support this just uh because it does seem to come up quite a bit. Um, and uh, just to get the cost and then then we know. Uh, Counselor Johnson.
Three quick points by me. One, the question of the liability insurance came up. Uh, staff, can you tell me that we are covered by the same insurance policy with the kids skateboarding up at the skateboard park? Or people walking holiday holiday Holland Creek Trail as we would if we had lifeguards? Question number two is with the pool, do we have situations where we run out of lifeguards? So if we don't run a lifeguards at the pool, why would we run out of lifeguards at the beach? And also uh the cost, if we had the pool open, we'd be paying the same wages if we had the person down at the beach. And the very last point I want to make is I raised this before. I was in Mexico and there's beaches that are set up for the people who are disabled. And there's various grants available. Could we not apply for a grant to make our beach handicap accessible? And use that grant money to help pay for any improvements and staffing? Thank you.
Uh, through the chair, Counselor Johnson. Um, the liability question, I'll, I can get that confirmed, but I believe it is all the same. When when parks are being used as they're intended, you're and the the town feels comfortable with the level of risk that we're pursuing, then skate parks are covered no different than the park that's down at Transfer Beach right now with the way it's set up. Um, it becomes a duty of care that when you establish those expectations, you have the duty of care to meet those expectations. So that's where the challenge becomes. Um, as far as lifeguarding, staffing at the pool, um, I'd have to go back and look at records to see if we've ever reached a circumstance where we didn't have trained lifeguards on deck and weren't able to operate a swim. I haven't, I don't think that's happened. Um. And uh, I think the water safety audit that was done, I believe in two thousand and eighteen by the Life Saving Society did recognize that an accessibility audit at Transfer Beach should be undertaken as well. Um, so accessibility is, was seen as possibly an issue. Um, which would be in any tidal zone where water's going up and going down and and what's a normal beach and what night might not be a normal beach. And I believe that's the challenge with having rafts in these tidal zones as well. And where there's kids diving off a raft that may be at nine feet at one point could be at two feet at a low tide. Which could pose greater risk.
Well, what? Uh, yeah, quick follow up with the mayor, so.
Okay, the follow up was uh the point I raised, would there be an opportunity to get funding from the provincial or federal government? If we made our beach more handicap accessible? And could those funds not be used to offset some of these costs that we are looking at?
Well, I'll take that one, because usually grants go through with finance. Oftentimes, well, uh, grant funding is not one hundred percent. So there will be a capital outlay that uh the town would have to to definitely come up with. Additionally, um, some of these grants are very restrictive of what they will allow. They won't allow for um any of the operating costs. It will just be for capital. But we can investigate that. I know we did use funds for um, from the Rick Hansen Society for repairs on the Holland Creek Trail. So we have utilized those grants in the in the past for sure. If I could just speak to the one other comment too about um the uh how do you, if we've ever run into problems at FTCC. We also have to keep in mind that the pool at FTCC is restricted by somebody paying for admission and only coming when it's available to be open. We don't have that ability at um the at Transfer Beach. We can't actually stop people from showing up there. Um, like you can when we fit our numbers when it comes to the pool at FTCC. So that's why it's not quite the uh an apples to apples comparison.
Thanks, Aaron. Um, Mayor Stone.
Not really directly relevant, but I just uh searched my emails earlier about this. And shortly after I was elected, I was forwarded an email that was sent to council in two thousand and five by none other than Counselor Rob Johnson. I was just reading the back and forth between Rob and I. It was very nostalgic. Um, but it was uh the nostalgia there is that the email that was forwarded to me shortly after my election was an email that Rob had sent in two thousand and five to council asking them to look into this. And and here we are fifteen years later, so we've come full circle. And I can only imagine that the only lack of satisfaction here is that Jeff put it on the agenda. I know that at the end, if if we get the outcome, uh, and we go through this again, uh, we'll we'll have an opportunity to to uh, put it to bed one way or another.
Thank you. Uh, Counselor Johnson, we're
Just a last
question, okay.
No, just comment to the mayor. In my research regards to accidents and drowning at Transfer Beach, the only drowning that occurred was nineteen fifteen. And actually, it was a relative of my family's family. So therefore, if from nineteen fifteen to two thousand and twenty, one accident, you know, it's not a dangerous situation, but we've always had people swimming down there and having a lot of fun. And Jeff and even you, Aaron, can remember all the fun down at the beach. And it's, if we can get more people using the water, which is the fun part of the beach, we're better off with commuting. Thank you.
Thanks, Counselor Johnson. Um, I didn't, I didn't write down the motion, um, but I think we know what the gist of it is. I'm asking for a staff report uh back on this. So seeing no more discussion, I'll call the question. All those in favor? Opposed, unopposed, motion carried. Thank you.
Aaron, an email in two thousand and fifteen.
Well, after seeing that picture the mayor said, maybe we're not thinking big enough. Maybe we need to think bigger. Uh, okay, uh, five point three, the downtown public washroom. Counselor Johnson has requested that the committee discuss plans for permanent downtown public washroom. The two thousand and nineteen staff report is attached for background information. So Counselor Johnson, would you like to start off?
It's just, as I mentioned before, my location gives me an opportunity um, see how well used the the facility is. To give you an example, on Monday, which was a holiday and the town was dead, there is four people used it within an hour. So therefore, with all the stores being closed or not allowing people to use public washrooms, the need for public washroom is very real. And come the fall, yes, we may have less people down here, but the need will not go away. If we pull the public washroom over Christmas and the winter season, uh, it could have a detrimental effect on the economy of the downtown core by people who've been caught in a compromising position, not be able to find a washroom, might not will come back again. So what I want to know is what the view of the rest of council is as to the desirability of keeping that washroom open and doing other things to keep people downtown during the fall and winter months. Thank you.
Thanks, Counselor Johnson. Sorry. No, I said, I said, thank you. I was asking if there is any discussion. Uh, Counselor Patterson.
Does that class Counselor Johnson is a peeping tom? Helping people using the bathroom downtown?
It's called neighborhood watch.
I just got kicked off.
No, you're here.
No, you're here. Can you see me? Cause I don't see anybody.
No, you're here. I said I'm part of the neighborhood watch.
Uh, oh, why the hell have I got that? There we are. Okay, um, I agree with uh Counselor Johnson that uh we do need the facility downtown uh for voters and and residents alike until we by next spring have a permanent washroom. So uh, I'm not sure what our agreement is with the about the rental unit that's there. But I think that should be extended um indefinitely.
Mayor Stone.
Yeah, I I I think that there's going to be a little bit of a call here for us to to look at how we might extend some of this stuff, especially with in regards to some of the resurgence of COVID infections and some of the increasingly restrictive um uh, regulations or restrictions coming from public health. Um, so I think it's probably um, something we should explore. Um, not only in terms of uh, of the public washroom, but you know, how we can best utilize the the assets that we have put in place this summer to help support businesses. Because I think this is going to continue at least as is um through the fall and winter. If not, you know, unfortunately, hopefully not uh, not getting back to a full shutdown. But um, there's definitely going to be um, a a need for some time. Um, it's difficult because I think at the time, um, when we had concerns from a neighboring business about the public washroom that's there, um, was that it was kind of understood that, you know, it was kind of coming up in October that it would be gone. And now we're having a conversation about extending that. Uh, on the staff, uh, sorry, on the agenda, I understood this about the conversations around the permanent downtown public washroom. Um, but uh, that being said, um, I'm not unsupportive of looking at options for, you know, preserving downtown public washroom through the through the fall and winter. Um, how we do that, I'm not sure if it's what we've got now or or some kind of alternative. But I, you know, I'd be open to the idea considering where we are with COVID.
Thanks, Mayor Stone. Um, Counselor Johnson, I'm gonna go Counselor Stevens first, because he hasn't spoken yet, so, and then I'll go to you next.
Uh, thank you. So it it was my impression too that we were going to have a a bit of a status update on um the permanent uh washroom itself. And uh, so something had had occurred to me. One thing I I wanted to make a point of because I've had people say to me, why isn't the town contributing? And it is noted in the in the staff report, but uh thirty two thousand in capital costs and a commitment to do twenty six thousand dollars a year in maintenance uh, on the on the washroom once it's there. Um, one uh, one uh, and it and it's sort of is a theme we've touched on a bit tonight um, in terms of consulting them. Um, the downtown business association has, have they contributed to the washroom at this point? Would it be something to follow up to get us closer to the point where we have that that critical mass of of cash to um to execute this project? And and uh, I don't know who to ask in the crowd, but if if, do we have a sort of uh, a current number that we're short on the project too? Thank you.
Um, Counselor Johnson, if I go to you, um, I just to try to find an answer to that, because I see Counselor Patterson putting his hand up, but or Ms. Anderson.
I yield to Counselor Patterson.
Thanks.
I'm not too sure if the city manager has an answer for that.
I don't have um a a full tally of what has come through regarding the downtown business association. Uh, they have not put money directly into the town, but if they would probably, they may have been contributing through through the Kinsmen. Don't forget, this was a project that the Kinsmen was bringing us as a grassroots one. It is in the capital plan for the town with with the funds coming from the the real property reserve for this too.
The the uh, ladies of downtown business have contributed a small amount as well as the chamber. Considering um, the the year that they've uh gone through um you know, expectations are that there probably won't be more. Um, on Thursday, this coming Thursday at ten o'clock, uh, folks from Fortis will be here to talk to the mayor and the chamber president uh, and the LDB president. Um, the washroom project is a finalist in their community grant uh for fifteen thousand dollars. And there's a couple of other irons in the fire, um, which I uh, feel quite strongly will um hoping that it, I feel strongly that we'll be able to wrap this whole thing up by November.
Thanks, Counselor Patterson.
Got the answer you wanted.
It looks like it. Counselor Johnson.
The um, one of the reasons I was asked, bringing this forward at this time is if we're going to um keep the washroom here for the winter, we may need to winterize it with some heat um, for the the public. And uh, just that we should be looking at that as a project when we do our cat uh, our operational budgets.
Thank you. Counselor Mackay.
Thank you. Um, I don't know about winterizing it in and out pretty quick. But the bottom, I'm just wondering if it's possible, if it looks like we're going to be looking towards building the permanent one. Um, is it feasible for lots of considerations then to move? If we're going to continue the other one, if that's the decision we come to later, can we move it to another location in the interim?
I'll have to put that through the staff without putting them on the spot.
If just to clarify, were you saying that as we're billing it, we'll just need to be in that location? And so we would move it to another location downtown so that people would have access to it? Uh, if that's the case, yes, if council um requ- request us to do that, we'd definitely do that. It's easy enough to to move around. It's a rented porta potty from um coast. Thank you. That's just what I wanted to know.
Okay, so seeing no more discussion. Mayor Stone.
Just a quick question through the staff. What's the deadline on it right now? Is it end of September or end of October?
Through the chair, mayor, um, it is till the end of September. And I think that's the message that we've sent out to the local businesses in the area that we would have it on site till the end of September.
That's what I thought. So, you know, at some point, um, that point probably being next Tuesday at our council meeting, the last council meeting of September, I believe. Um, it'll be important for us to give staff direction if we do wish to do uh some kind of extension and or relocation of the the uh porta potty for some term this winter. So I would just say, you know, we should maybe uh, you know, ask around or or have some thoughts coming into next week's council meeting. And I'm sure we could entertain that as a a late addition uh based on its time sensitivity and urgency um, as a late item if necessary for next week's meeting. Because as of tonight, I believe our agenda is Because as of tonight, I believe our agenda is closed for next week's meeting, but, um, maybe we'll just kind of keep that in our back pocket and do a little bit of research this week and see what, uh, makes sense when we come back a week from now.
Thanks, Mayor Stone. Okay, uh, moving on to correspondence. So we have a recommendation here that council received for information, the correspondent stated August 16th, 2020, from Jane Kilthay, One Cowichin, regarding the town of Lady Smith's climate action plan. Uh, Mayor Stone?
And then? And then I'll speak to it if I get a second or?
Okay, uh, seconded by Counselor Stevens?
Okay, so if I can speak to it?
Yes.
Um, so, you know, I appreciate the, the spirit and intent of the letter. Um, I've reiterated many times about comparators and finding likeness and, and, uh, really reinforcing our commitment to addressing issues related to climate change, especially through, uh, thoughtful policy like our official community plan. I think it's important to recognize the realities of major investment in climate action is really senior government. And I would continue to, uh, stress all non-government organizations or, or public groups that their best focus would be a concerted effort to lobby the provincial and federal governments to enable us with not only the tools, but the financial resources to achieve the things that seem to be, um, critical to a lot of these organizations, including One Cowichin. But I will say that, uh, based on the strategic priorities of council and the upcoming OCP work, that the biggest impact that we can make on, uh, getting to, you know, a GHG plan and, and, uh, I guess, a situation that would help us contribute to mitigating and, uh, adapting to climate change, things through our OCP and all the other decisions that we make every day as a lens that we look through is how we address climate change. We don't have the resources to dedicate staff to come up with a specific climate change strategy. And unfortunately, as much as I support the, the spirit and intent and the work that is required, uh, to help us move the climate change bar forward. Um, if this is a demand for Lady Smith's climate action plan, I've been very clear in the past that I don't think that that's how we address climate change. We address it in every single thing we do. Um, we addressed it as such in our, in our strategic plan and that we'll continue to look at climate impacts. Um, with every infrastructure, community amenity, um, all of the things where it's relevant to the discussion. And I think there's no place that has more relevance than through the OCP. We have the right policies in place in our OCP. Um, we'll be shaping the community for the future to achieve the, uh, greenhouse gas, um, uh, reduction targets that we may vary in fact, may very well in fact, set as part of the OCP. So I appreciate the, uh, the lobbying for One Cowichin and all the work that they do, but I would continue to, um, you know, speak directly to them to say that your best efforts are spent at lobbying the provincial and federal governments to provide us with the tools and financial resources to achieve the things you want to see, not trying to compare us to cities of like Vancouver that have billions and billions of dollars in annual revenues, or even places like Kamloops that have significantly larger budgets than we do and more resources at their disposal. So we will do whatever we can within our power and our capabilities. But, uh, I'm not sure that the demands that keep coming forward from One Couch and are realistic in the context of the realities of our small communities in Cowichin.
Thanks, Mayor Stone. Well said. Uh, Counselor McKay and Counsel, then Counselor Patterson? Oh, sorry.
For me.
Sorry, I saw you hand up. Uh, Counselor Patterson?
Just, uh, I guess, a, a quick question going back to the washrooms, uh, for staff. Would it, would it be possible to check out whether a bottle filler water fountain very similar to the one at Transfer, exactly the same as the one that is permissible on that site? Uh, now with COVID or?
Order, Mr. Chair, we have a resolution on the floor.
Yes, that was, that was.
I thought we voted on that.
No, no, we haven't.
Okay.
I'm sure that's a question that you can ask Ms. Anderson, and I'm sure she'll be happy to answer that when she has a chance. Thanks. Uh, do I see anybody else on the speakers list? Are I seeing none? I'll call the question. All those in favor? Opposed, seeing none, motion carries. Uh, oh, new business. Do we have any new business?
No.
Nope. Uh, Mayor Stone?
I'm making a motion to adjourn.
Perfect. I was just going to ask for that. Do I have a second or? Counselor Jacobson, all those in favor?
You got my question, staff?
Opposed, opposed. Needing is adjourned. Thanks, you guys. That was a long one, I know. Um, it was a
Chair, that's a marathon.
It was a full one. So thanks, everybody, for your patience, staff. Thanks for being champs. Much appreciated.
And for mama who I can see the top of baby's head there, that's also a, uh, a serious, long meeting. So I appreciate you taking the time.
I wonder if our new CAO was watching.
And our old CAO was watching too. I just got a text from him.
Every week's like this.
You won't be missing this.
Except longer.